Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the February 2013 meeting of the Raymond Board of Selectmen. It's a very, very heavy meeting tonight, so first of all, I would ask you to turn off or at least get it on vibration, your cell phones. And we'll move along. First order of business, minutes of the previous meeting.
Make a motion to accept.
Second. All in favor? Accepted. The second one is, second issue is the Peddler's Ordinance. This is a public hearing. Can we talk about the Peddlers?
I am Chris Hansen, Code Officer for the Town of Raymond.
Hang on a second. We have to go into a public here, so we're just separate from the Selectmen agenda. So it's called a public hearing right now. Allow a presentation and then comment, and then we can go out of the public. Okay. I thought I did call a public hearing, but we'll do it again. I'm calling a public hearing at this point on the Peddler's Ordinance.
Again, I'm Chris Hansen, Code Officer for the Town of Raymond. We're here tonight to look at several ordinance changes. The first one being the Peddler's Ordinance. In this ordinance, we're proposing some changing, changes that are housekeeping in nature to clarify the application process. Primary significant changes to the ordinance include the Board of Selectmen having the final approval authority, particularly regarding location in relation to existing businesses, and the ability to issue licenses for the town-owned land without affecting the number of total licenses issued. Previously, the Town of Raymond Peddler's Ordinance only allowed two permits per year. Then the Town of Raymond started issuing a Peddler's license for the RFP for the maintenance of the Raymond Beach, and thus, we had some conflicting situations with how many licenses could we issue each year. This clarifies that. It also clarifies the size of the Peddler's setup to limit it to 150 square feet, and it also restricts Peddlers to be, from being located within 65 feet of another existing business. And it ups the insurance from $300,000 to $400,000 to keep in line with our other policies in town. And it also gives, like I said, the Board of Selectmen the final authority to approve the Peddler's license, and they can condition that with waivers or conditions.
Since this is a public hearing, we'd like to hear from the public on this. Anyone wishing to comment?
Discussion amongst the board.
Okay, and we'll have a discussion amongst the board members. Board member discussion.
Yes.
Chris, could I, could I just ask you? We may have to go back up. That under H, section H, which is a new, a new addition to the ordinance, states the town may issue Peddler's license for the sale of goods on town-owned property through the solicitation of RFPs. Will those be considered part of the two permits, or are those in addition to?
My understanding, those would be separate and distinct.
In addition to.
In addition to the two.
So allow us to be able to?
To do Raymond Beach.
Issue further for ones that are specific for?
Correct.
Causes that may be useful to the town.
Could be of all field, could be any town.
Nonprofit, charitable.
Correct.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Any other board comments?
Seems like we're taking a lot of information out.
I think, I think you did a good job on this ordinance and cleaned it up. It takes into account all the things that we were worried about earlier. I think it's a much better written ordinance, so.
You ready for a motion?
No, first thing you need to do is close the public hearing.
Okay, the public hearing is closed. You may notice I'm being coached, and that is correct.
I'll make a motion to accept the amended Peddler's Ordinance and send it to town meeting.
Second.
Comments? All in favor? Next order of business, consideration of abatements. Kurt LeBelle.
Kurt LeBelle, Assessor's Agent, the Town of Raymond. I have four tax abatement requests which have been submitted in your packet. Two are recommended for approval and two recommended for denial. The two recommended approvals are related to a land division off Cedar Lane down on Panther Pond. The, due to an administrative error, the original parcel, which was waterfront, and then was divided out to a non-waterfront parcel, was assessed as waterfront era. And the divided parcel has some land use issues in regards to inadequate road frontage, so there are some issues that cost to cure. I believe the individual who purchased that lot is going to buy the other lot as, now, so that he can cure that issue, and also, there are some wetland issues pertaining to that lot. Is it, it, it's where a stream comes out of Panther Pond. It's going to limit the ability to place a building as close to the water as some people might otherwise be.
Questions for Mr. LeBelle?
I move to accept the recommendation for map in lot 010-011, George H. Bartlett, Jr., for the amount of $2,079.03.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
I move the recommendation for map 010-011 in lot 0011-C, owner of record, Yazi Yazbeck and Virginia Yazbeck, for $825.84.
Second. Discussion? All in favor? Pass.
Thank you, Kurt. We also have two recommended denials. The first one was based on the fee appraisal of a property that is assessed at $1.62 million. Fee appraisal was provided with an opinion value of $690,000. The appraisal was reviewed, and we requested some additional information from the applicant, including homeowner's insurance information, property inspection, and title insurance information. The home is fairly new. It's only a couple of years old. Had a reported cost to build of $750,000 with a million-dollar insurance policy on the building alone, and the land valuation of about $500,000. So we have a combined value of somewhere in excess of $1,500,000 in that regard. It was our feeling that the appraisal of $690,000 was inadequate to overcome the tax assessment.
Kurt, did they only provide that one appraisal?
That's correct.
They only provided one appraisal?
Right.
I'm having a hard time hearing you, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry. My voice is a little shaky today. The second application is based upon the purchase price of a home. Property was purchased for $143,500. Has a tax assessment on the property of $221.7. The purchase price, we felt, was not indicative of fair market value in this case, as it's a, was a purchase from a lender as a result of a bank foreclosure. Typically, we see these properties sell at under fair market value because the bank's considerations in selling property are not the same as, as a typical homeowner. And there was also some comparisons to other similar properties. We looked at that and found that the other properties in the area were between 50 and 80 years old and were fairly heavily depreciated, where this property was only about five years old. So, you know, that, that accounts for the difference in the building valuation. So we recommend denial of that abatement as well.
Any questions for Kurt? Motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the Assessor's recommendation to deny abatements. I can't read the, the lot numbers. Can you read them?
Yeah. Lot number 036001, Doug was A. Donahue, Jr., Susan H. Donahue, and, I want to do both.
Yep.
And map lot 052-040, Mark Acusti, Nancy Jedry.
Second.
I'll move in second.
Move in second. All in favor?
I have, I have one other item. I have a pending tax abatement application for 64 Sunset Chimneys Road. The application was submitted in October. Our office and the applicant agreed to an extension of the 60-day deadline to make a decision on the abatement until the end of February. On December 19th, I wrote to the applicant and requested further information, insurance information, appraisals, and a property inspection with a deadline of January 31st for them to reply. The deadline came and went, and we heard nothing from the applicant. So last Wednesday, I spoke with the applicant's legal counsel, who indicated to me that there was confusion on their part as to who was going to get what, or, or some, some sort of confusion which enabled, prevented them from meeting the deadline. I spoke to the legal counsel, and we came to a agreement that I would come to you with their request for more time on the January 31 deadline to provide the information that we requested them. And they in turn would grant a further extension for the board to hear the abatement appeal till the end of April. Spoke with the town's legal counsel. We felt that was the prudent thing to do, to make sure that we get all the information that we need to make an informed decision on this. The applicant's legal counsel was supposed to submit a written request for extension so that I could bring it to the board today, but I've, as of today, I have not received anything from the applicant. So what I'm kind of looking to do here is get a sense from the board if, through the course of the next couple of weeks, we do get a request for an extension from the applicant. Is the board agreeable to the extension request so that the board can hear the abatement in April?
What is the alternative, Kurt?
The alternative is that if we don't hear, or a, if we don't get a request, the February deadline passes and the abatement will be automatically denied, and then the applicant can proceed on to the Board of Assessment Review if they so desire at that point. So what I would recommend is that if the board wants to hear this case, they approve an extension that I am anticipating will come in. However, if the extension request does not come in, you may not get to hear this case. It'll be automatically denied. It'll go on to the Board of Assessment. So a little bit of an unusual situation. You know, the deadline's passed. The board probably could deny the abatement outright based upon the missed deadline. However, the town's legal counsel advised that the board give, you know, more time for the applicant to provide the information if they.
Tell us again, how mu, what do you mean by more time, Kurt? I know you've said it already.
Yeah. I had discussed with the applicant's attorney about an April Selectments meeting to wrap this up, so I would be thinking they would have until the end of March to provide the information.
Mr. Chairman. Kurt, would we, if we grant the extension, do we necessarily as a board have to hear? Or could then it just go through the process, continue through the process and be denied, I mean, later in April? We, we, it wouldn't be incumbent on us if we grant the extension that we actually have to hear the appeal.
Yeah, you, you can, you can choose not to render a decision on a tax abatement, on any tax abatement. However, if you do not do that, it's automatically deemed denied, and then the applicant can move forward.
I would move to grant the extension.
I'll second that. Any more discussion on it?
Do you feel, you feel comfortable?
Well.
You don't look comfortable.
It's a little bit unusual. Usually, we get more cooperation out of a taxpayer than this, particularly where they're asking for tax relief. But it is a sizable tax appeal and well worth the extra effort on the part of the town to, to extend, you know, the request, to give more time, so. And it's a little unusual for me not to have that request in hand.
So do you feel with the variables that you have and see that?
Yeah, my, my feeling is that if I've spoken, you know, with the applicant's attorney, and they know what they need to do, if they fail to do it, I'm going to assume that they choose not to provide the information, and then I would recommend that the board deny the abatement simply based on the fact that we don't have anything that we requested to make a decision on.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would ask that the motion has a specific timeframe to it, of 15 days. I think that is sufficient time. Since they've already gone past the extension already, I think if we give them another 15 days, I would offer that as a friendly amendment to the motion.
I would accept that.
Yeah.
Yeah, the only caveat that I would make the board aware of in regards to that was originally, when we discussed with the applicant an extension, the town had requested a March 31 extension. The applicant would only agree to a February 28 extension. And I've discussed with the, the applicant's attorney that I would not be able to make it to your March meeting. So that's why, that's why we come up with this April extension. It's a little further than they would like, so it's kind of a, we would, they were giving a, in theory, they're giving a little bit to us with a longer extension to hear the appeal, because they want to move this along.
So are you suggesting a March 31 deadline?
I'm suggesting a March 31 deadline for their information and an April 30 deadline for the board.
For the board.
Make a decision.
Because he won't be in the March, the March meeting.
You made the motion, so are you okay with the March 31 deadline?
The March 31, for, for your purposes, yes, and for our purposes, it's still April.
Right. Provided, provided they actually ask for the, for the extension. Otherwise, this is just going to, time's going to run out on them, February 28.
And the only, the only request I'd make is that we make a positive effort to inform them as of tonight's decision.
All right. Okay. Motion seconded?
Yep.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Kurt. What do we have next? Oh, Melissa.
Yes.
Melissa Smith. Melissa Smith, Hon Road, is requesting that the Board of Selectmen declare March 25th to 31st as Congenital Diaphragmatic Hernia Awareness Week to increase public knowledge and awareness of this birth defect, this very serious birth defect, and allow for community-based event in order to raise funds. Melissa, you're up there already.
Hi, I'm Melissa Smith. I live in Raymond. I'm here today to request the week of March 25th to 31st, be CDH Awareness Week in Raymond, Maine. CDH stands for Congenital Diaphragmatic Hernia. CDH is when the diaphragm develops incorrectly and an opening in the diaphragm allows organs to move up into the chest, inhibiting lung development, and oftentimes moving the heart. There is no known drug to cause a diaphragmatic hernia. Research is working on finding a cause, and there are some genetic conditions which coordinate with CDH, but isolated CDH. Approximately five babies in the United States are diagnosed each day with CDH. Of those families, most have never heard of CDH until their unborn or newborn child is diagnosed. My son Ethan was born at CMMC on September 30th, 2011, with CDH. Ethan was only treated for eight hours in the NICU at CMMC and then was lifelighted to Boston Children's Hospital, where he remained for eight weeks. At three days old, Ethan underwent surgery to have his spleen, small and large intestines removed from his chest cavity and repositioning his heart and stomach. Ethan had two holes in his diaphragm. One hole was closed up with a large Gore-Tex patch. The other one, they were able to close up with stitches. Sorry, I'm nervous. Ethan was on a breathing machine for four, for four weeks. We finally got to hold our son for the first time at four weeks. He remained on a feeding tube until he was just over five weeks old. While at Boston Children's Hospital, our son had several blood transfusions, pneumonia, and three blood infections, as well as high pulmonary tension caused by CDH. Ethan was discharged from Boston Children's Hospital two days before Thanksgiving in 2011. He came home with oxygen and O2 monitors, lots of medicines, as well as a visiting nurse, occupational therapist, and physical therapist. Ethan was homebound for most of his first year of life. Due to my son's condition, I had closed my state license in home daycare so I could tend to him. September 2012, Ethan's diaphragm grew away from his patch, allowing his intestine, small intestine, to travel up through the gap that was created. It took over six weeks to get Ethan properly diagnosed in Maine due to the lack of knowledge on his condition. Ethan had his second repair surgery on September 26, 2012, at Boston Children's Hospital. Due to Ethan's undeveloped lungs during the winter months, he gets Sinagis vaccines monthly that are given by his in-home nurse. The vaccine is to prevent him from getting RSV. Today, Ethan is a happy, growing boy considering all that he has been through. We are very thankful for all the doctors and nurses that have worked with our son and that have continued to work with our son at Boston Children's Hospital, Central Maine Medical Center, Maine Medical Center, and Home Health, visiting nurses of Southern Maine, as well as Raymond paramedics. I hope to get proclamation passed for the CDH Awareness Week in Raymond. We would like to do a CDH Awareness Family Fun Day to be held in the Town of Raymond. By having this event, it would honor my son and other survivors, remember those babies who chose wings over feet. We would start the day off with a walk in honor and memory of all children and families affected by CDH. Team Ethan Shirts have been made up by so crafty neighbors and will be available to the community members to purchase. 20% of the sales are going to Breath of Hope, an organization that works closely with CDH Team Ethan Shirts will also be worn for the March of Dimes Walk in Lewiston, where I'll be giving another speech this year. All money raised for the CDH event will be for CDH research and to work on getting a medical seminar in the state of Maine for all doctors and nurses to attend to get the most up-to-date information on CDH. This event would spread awareness and teach others in the community about it. My experience with Ethan has enlightened me to the reality that knowledge is power, and by making others aware and educating them, more research and knowledge would save lives. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Melissa.
I'll make a motion to issue the proclamation.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say, Melissa, you did a very good job.
Did an excellent job.
I know you were nervous. You did a good job.
All in favor? Congratulations, Melissa. The proclamation has been signed?
Yeah.
Yeah. Consideration of appointment of members to the Raymond Conservation Commission. This will be presented by Louise Lester. Are you here, Louise?
The Raymond Conservation Commission has asked the Selectmen to appoint two new members to their organization, Leah Stetson and Steve Kater. That's all I have.
That's all you have.
These individuals. Do we get any information on the applicants?
I'm sorry?
Not that I know of.
Do we get any information on the applicants?
I didn't get any.
These individuals have been attending the meeting for some period of time, the Conservation Commission meetings, and John Rand is here. He may want to expand on this, but my understanding is that the commission has discussed their interest and their desire for membership and is recommending that?
Absolutely. They have, they have our, John Rand, Raymond Conservation. They have our vote. They've been avid supporters through the last several years, and we've always been making the pitch that we're hiring at the Raymond Conservation Commission, and we strongly encourage the Select Board to approve their adoption into the, into the committee.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint two members of the Raymond Conservation Commission, which would be Leah Stetson and Steve Kater.
Kater.
Kater, sorry.
Second. Any discussion?
My only concern is normally when we appoint people to a board, we have an application we can review. We didn't get one, but that's okay.
On the other hand, Mr. Rand's up there, vouching for him, and to me, that's credible.
No, I understand. I'm just.
We did, we did not receive that. John, did you, did you review an application?
We did. Okay, okay. There you go. It came in, it was, it was accepted. But our, yeah, our, our way of business is working with the folks that come and, and recognizing the value that they bring to the committee, and that's what our, we, we can formalize a process going forward, Joe. Sounds like that might be a good thing.
I mean, it's what we do with every other board.
Right. I think that's a, a failure for us to coordinate properly, not their fault. I know that you've had a looser process, and so to make it consistent with all of the other boards and committees, we should, I agree with Joe, make, make sure that we have applications, and we'll, we'll make sure that moving forward. We'll coordinate that with you.
That sounds good. Let's do that.
I know in the past, you've opened, issued sort of an open invitation, I guess, for anyone who's interested.
Correct.
Both applicants are well-known to us, by the way. I mean, Leah's been working with us recently.
And Steve's been active on, on Morgan Meadow stuff over the years. That's been very helpful.
So we have a motion?
We have a motion.
And seconded? All in favor?
Great. Thank you.
Much.
Thank you.
Presentation requests for consideration of, you have oil tar sands, I have tar oil sands the way I remember it, but resolution will be by William Frazier, Steve Kater, with the Healthy Waters Coalition, the both members. Yes?
Yeah, I'm Steve Kater. I'm a resident of Raymond. I'm just going to wait for MT to set up.
Can you speak up, Steve?
My name is Stephen Kater. I'm a resident of Raymond. We're just going to give Mary Tracy a second to set up her computer for the PowerPoint presentation that we have for you.
I hope you can keep these presentations to 15 minutes. That would be helpful.
I am also a member of the Healthy Waters Coalition, and I'm a new member of the Raymond Conservation Commission. My co-presenter, Bill Frazier, unfortunately was unable to be here tonight. My co-presenter, Bill Fraser, unfortunately was unable to be here tonight. Before I begin, I need to point out that there is an error in the agenda. It refers to tar sands. We recognize that that's not correct. The issues before us relate to oil sands, not tar sands, and I apologize for the use of the misnomer or the common language terminology. So on behalf of the Coalition, I thank the selectmen for giving us the opportunity to make this presentation. Also allow me to thank Canadian consul Erin Anvil, and also Portland Montreal Pipeline Corporation CEO Larry Wilson, as well as all the members of the public for being here tonight. I'd like to recognize the Portland Montreal Pipeline Corporation for having received numerous environmental and safety awards from entities such as the American Petroleum Institute and the United States Coast Guard. I'm sure that these were received in recent years, and I'm sure they were both hard-earned and well-deserved. I'd also ask, please, that any questions and comments that you have be held until the end of the presentation. Thank you. So Healthy Waters Coalition, we're just a local group. We include representatives from local government, watershed organizations, other interests, residents, citizens. Some examples are Sebagal Lake Anglers Association, the Raymond Waterways Group, Panther Pond Association, St. Joseph's College, and seven lakes regions, lakes region towns. Our purpose is to inform and educate citizens about issues affecting Sebagal Lake and surrounding Raymond is a water community, and we're here tonight to recommend adoption of the proposed resolution titled "A Resolution to Protect the Health and Safety of Local Citizens, Water Bodies, and Other Natural Resources in Relation to the Future Transport of Heavy Oil Sands," also known as diluted bitumen, "through Raymond, Maine." So the purpose is to ensure reasonable measures will be taken to protect Raymond's local resources. Oil sands have characteristics that are different than conventional oil, so we view those as reasons to be concerned about that transport through the community. Oil sands, what is diluted bitumen or dilbit? It's one of three heavy viscous oil products derived from oil sands. It's not considered the same as conventional crude, and it does go by other names, including cold lake dilbit, heavy oil sands, cold lake crude, and tar sands. So the proposed resolution makes reference to the Raymond Comprehensive Plan of 2004, which emphasizes the importance of protecting natural resources, and some of those resources are significant aquifers that we have here. The Maine Department of Environmental Protection report identifies sand and gravel aquifers that are at risk from transportation of oil sands, and the pipeline not only cuts through these aquifers, but most Raymond residents rely on drinking water that does come from aquifers. This is a map that shows the route of the pipeline presently. It enters Raymond down on the Wyndham Line. It passes by the Good Life Market and goes underneath Panther Run. Panther Run is a stream that empties Panther Pond into Jordan Bay, which is a major portion of Sebagal Lake. It continues along parallel to Route 302 and enters a marshland at the intersection of Route 121 and Route 302, and then continues up through Raymond Village, paralleling 121 and Panther Pond, until it comes to another wetland. This wetland has a stream that empties directly into Panther Pond. Just beyond that, we come to the pumping station in Raymond, which is at the intersection of Plains Road and 121, and then the pipeline leaves. So we have three areas of concern here in town: Panther Run, the marshland at the head of Jordan Bay next to our public beach, and the wetlands area that does empty directly into Panther Pond. So we're talking about safeguarding what's at risk here in Raymond: local resources, local economy, and residents. Raymond's wetlands are valued at 1.1 million in ecosystem services. That means flood attenuation and preserving water quality. Of course, we have waterfowl, wading birds and fish habitat, and that includes landlocked salmon. And of course, let's not forget that Sebagal Lake is internationally renowned. We have multiple businesses in town that depend on lakes and ponds, their economic livelihood. We have many summer residents and vacation rentals, overnight children's camps. Property values are very important to us, and we ask the question, what would be the effect of oil spill stigma on Raymond? We have 411 taxable lots in Raymond on Sebagal Lake. Total assessment value is over 320 million. That provides annual town revenue in excess of $3.5 million. Residents depend on 29 different drinking water supplies. That's aquifers, that's in addition to Sebagal Lake. We face the loss of revenue derived from recreation, face the loss of property and lifestyle if relocation is necessary for residents, and residents could suffer negative health effects. Over 300 people suffered from immediate illness from benzene exposure during the Kalamazoo River spill in Marshall, Michigan. And if the skin is broken, that could lead to blood diseases like leukemia, and prolonged exposure can lead to death. Now, that comes from the Imperial Oil Safety Sheet on Dilbit. So submerged oil is what makes this thing more unique than even the Gulf of Mexico situation. This experience was brand-new for us. It would have been brand-new for anyone in the United States. This is a quote from Mark Durno. He's with the U.S. EPA, made that statement in July of 2012 in relation to the cleanup efforts that were required at the Kalamazoo River oil sand spill. So there are state and federal calls to action. Municipalities are being called upon to adopt spill prevention and mitigation strategies and to comply with state and federal regulations. State and federal agencies have met in Maine to begin providing oil sands products mitigation training. That occurred in December of 2012. Benefits and liabilities: It's estimated that the project will create 1 to 20 jobs in Maine. The product is not destined for Maine. However, we are absorbing the risk with little benefit, and there may essentially be some legal and insurance liabilities for the town associated with this project. So I'd like to ask you to just take a look at a quick case study. This comes from the Kalamazoo River oil sand spill that occurred in Marshall, Michigan in July of 2010. This is a picture of the rupture of the oil pipe. And at 9:25 PM, firefighters were called to respond to a 9/11 call. Local residents had detected fuel oil odor. Enbridge, the company that was in charge of the pipeline, responded in 17 hours. About 850,000 gallons of oil sands spilled into Talmadge Creek. That affected 40 miles of the Kalamazoo River, surrounding wetlands and Lake Marrow. And 30 to 50 residences had to be evacuated. This is a picture of Talmadge Creek. I'd just like you to notice that the actual creek is the black ribbon passing through the center of the photograph here. They've brought in construction matting to put along the shoreline so that they can move heavy equipment, trucks and excavators, that are working to remove the oil sands from the site. There are light stanchions. I assume that this was probably a 24, you know, an around-the-clock operation to get this cleaned up. Now, this is one small section of the 30 to 40 miles that had to be cleaned up, but you can see how extensive the operation is. So the National Transportation Safety Board cites that there were pervasive organizational failures at Enbridge. And in July of 2012, the Kalamazoo River finally reopened her recreation with a warning that skin irritation is likely from residual oil and water and sediment. And Marrow Lake remains closed to date. This is another photo. It's taken downstream from Marshall. We show this just to illustrate the, all the booms that are in place to try to capture the submerged oil and all the watercraft that are involved in cleaning this up. But you'll also notice the proximity to residences. This might be similar to what we would see in Panther Run with Indian Shores right next to Panther Run. So due to the density of oil sands, it's much heavier than any other oil, and it sank to the bottom of the river. Two years and $800 million later, the cleanup is still going on, and the cost eclipses every other onshore oil spill in U.S. history. This comes from the e-journal, oilnews.com. So it's much easier and less costly to protect water quality than it is to restore water quality, and in many cases, water quality is impossible to restore once it has been We're gonna show you a quick video. This video comes from an overflight of the Kalamazoo-Talmadge Creek spill, and I think what's significant for you here is to just imagine maybe this occurred in Panther Run or in the Crooked River. This occurs very close to a lot of homes. Access to the river can be hard, so cleanup efforts can be hampered that way. And in addition, just look at the magnitude and the amount of equipment and effort that's required to clean this up. This has been ongoing for two years. Again, we're not done. They're not done there yet. The flyover's with a helicopter. It begins and passes over two sites a couple of times and then continues down the river. This is about two to three miles of the total cleanup site. I just think it's a pretty powerful video. It's pretty compelling as far as what it takes to, the effort that's required to clean up if you do, in fact, have a spill. I apologize if it's hard for some of you to see that. You didn't realize we'd have this many people here this evening. heavy equipment that's required to clean this up. So what we'd like to see is that you take a preemptive stance rather than a responsive one. You can see how difficult it is to react in response. You know, everybody that's involved here, the Pipeline Corporation, the Government of Canada, state and federal agencies, we all answer to different stakeholders, and there's only one body that's truly committed to the best interests of the people of Raymond, and that's you. So what we ask is that you please adopt this resolution to ensure that the proper safeguards and measures are in place prior to the transportation of oil sands through our community. So thank you very much for listening to our presentation, and I appreciate your consideration. If you have... Mr. Gifford, are we going to do questions, or is there no time for that?
Well, we can do questions, yes.
Okay. Then I will be joined by Leah Stetson, also of the Healthy Waters Coalition, to answer questions, if that's okay.
Thank you. We're open for questions now, Mr. Kater. Questions from the board, yes. Joe?
Can you explain to me what the difference is? We had a pipeline here for 60 years. We've never had an issue that I'm aware of. So is it okay to have regular oil flowing through? And then your concern is that this bitumen oil is gonna be more corrosive? Is there truly evidence to that effect? So what's the difference if you have an oil spill right now, or they don't have an application in that I'm aware of to reverse the flow, so to speak? So why is it okay to have the oil go through the pipeline now and then not have to worry about it, and then be more concerned down the route? An oil spill's gonna be an oil spill. It's gonna be a wreck no matter what happens.
Not exactly. It's different consistency.
Do you want me to field that one?
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'm Leah Stetson. Well, to start out, I think there's two parts of that question. One, you mentioned an application that you're not aware of. There have been several permit applications filed with the National Energy Board in Canada, and permitting is very technical and complicated, so we didn't get into all of the permitting tonight, but if you would like, we can submit that information as a follow-up tomorrow, but it's on the National Energy Board Canada website, the several permit applications filed by Enbridge for...
adopt various measures to call on towns to think about oil spill prevention. And so this is an attempt to comply with those recommendations in the state guidance that was just published in October 2012. So this is partly in response to that state guidance. Does that help answer that question?
No.
Mary Trace Duffy?
No, my question, my question is, if you have an oil spill now, it's a disaster.
Right.
Whether it's this crude oil we have going through the pipeline now.
Right.
Or in the future, if you use bitumen oil.
Right.
It's still a disaster either way.
Just a second.
Now, one cleanup may be harder than the other.
Right.
But environmentally, it's a disaster.
That's right. And that's actually why we have in the resolution, the second to the last be, be it further resolved statement, says protection from oil spills of any kind. So this resolution addresses multiple types of spills. And I've personally connected with folks at the State of Maine Hazard Team, and they talked to me about the state guidance that I just cited. And that's the guidance that's cited in this resolution. And that's, that's why we, we got to this point. Mary Trace Duffy has another comment. She's in our work group.
Good evening. Thanks for this opportunity to address that question. It's a wonderful question. I've, I've heard it everywhere. And one of the things that stands out to me is that you've had a, we have had a lot of influx of new people into this community who did not know that an oil pipe ran through the community, certainly underneath our precious waters. Additionally, 50 years ago, we, we didn't know about what oil did when it spilled out and what it did. At least, it was not in the general thinking at the time. We were all trying to do what's best for the community, including energy resources and using our resources. We are all endeavoring to become as up-to-date as possible about what it is our energy calls and demands from us as a community. We are all looking at these issues. And there's that, that a lot of people didn't even know that this pipeline existed until the last seven or eight months. And they've been shocked, frankly. The other piece to that question is that this is an entirely different product. It has to move faster. It has to move hotter. It's a product that has abrasives in it. It is very, very, it makes us extremely vulnerable, much more so than light crude oil. Think about light crude oil as honey, molasses, something to that effect. You can think about this as peanut butter with, with abrasive particles in it that move against the pipeline, which we know is 50 years old. We have some considerations. My understanding is that the, the piece that we showed you tonight of the pipeline that ruptured in Kalamazoo was brand new. So...
If I may follow up. Are you saying then that you're, if you had the, the power, you would stop oil, all oil flow through this pipeline?
That's not at all what I'm saying, sir. I'm saying that we have a lot of new information that we all have to be looking at in terms of protecting ourselves around oil and what it does. What we know about the tar sands is that it sinks, that Lake Moro, after two years of, you saw how much equipment was put in there. You saw the stanchions for 24-hour processing of this. And two years later, they're still closed, Lake Moro. There are people, there are families who have yet to go home because of this. It sinks. Thank you.
Joe, perhaps one last bit of information for your question. Conventional oil, which presently travels through the pipeline to Montreal, has different characteristics than the oil sands that will be traveling from Montreal south to Portland Harbor. So when you ask, "Why are we more concerned now than before?", I don't think that anyone can say at what time a rupture could happen to a system. I don't know that it would be prudent to assume that Enbridge didn't utilize technology like PIGS, which is a torpedo-like device that is used to, to assess the condition of pipelines. So I, I would assume that, that they utilized all the tools available to them. I don't think they were irresponsible that way. And I don't think that it would be prudent to say that that would be the case with, with Portland Pipeline. But I don't know how you predict when a rupture will happen. If a rupture occurs with this material that has different characteristics, being heavier and more viscous and, and containing significant amounts of benzene in it, that we are gonna have a different type of spill. And that was the purpose of, of showing the video. This is a different type of spill, so it's not necessarily all gonna float on top of the water where boom technology is, is appropriate. You'll remember that we, we got a lot of nice equipment after the Valdez problem that was stationed in Portland Harbor to respond. Well, that equipment is not necessarily appropriate for cleaning up submerged oil. How do we get oil off the bottom of Panther Run? Or how do we get it off the bottom of the Crooked River? That's, that was the purpose of the video. It's just simply more difficult. That's why we're really concerned about this material. Certainly, any type of oil spill is difficult. But this is a little more difficult because of its characteristics. Is that, is that an answer for you, Joe? Does that work?
I wouldn't. I, I don't mean to prolong this discussion any longer, especially for the group here, but for, for the interests of the process, since this group has proposed to this board language that it would like us to consider, without going through the whole "whereas's", which are the preamble to your resolution, I believe it would probably be useful in some way to get into the record the resolve. And so either by reading it, I was hoping maybe it would have been in a written form on the, on the, in the presentation. But for those, as, as we mentioned, there's, there's a lot of folks in town who may, are new and are just realizing that we've had a, a pipeline through this town for 50 to 60 years. There are still many, many out there sitting here over the next two weeks who don't even know what your resolve is. So I think it's, at some point, if this isn't the appropriate time, I would like to at least get the resolves into the record.
Do you want me to read them?
You, you know, you could attach this to the minutes as a resolve, so we don't have to listen to it being read to us.
Okay, as lo, as long as it...
I agree.
The thing with the minutes is, this, this will be broadcast probably in about a week. So there'll be about a week's time. Our minutes don't get approved until our following meeting. So I was just, in, in the interest, if there was some way we could...
Sure.
...expedite that without going through all of the resolves, but particularly the preamble with the reactive whereas's.
Right. Mr. ... Excuse me. Mr. Chairman, did, did the selectman receive the resolution in time to read it prior to this meeting?
Yes.
Yes, we did.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. That's why we didn't include it in the presentation.
It's, it's posted online. It's publicly available.
Okay, good.
Okay. We're ready to move on.
Is it posted individually or just part of the packet, Don, do you know?
It's not part of the packet.
Part of the packet, and it's also on the...
Danielle, it's not part of the e-packet.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, it is.
I'm looking right at it.
Oh, okay. I didn't see it today.
If I may, if it wouldn't be too much trouble, then just for the interests of public information, could we just separate out the resolution itself?
Absolutely.
And highlight that on the website?
Yep.
So that folks wouldn't have to go through the whole, whole e-packet in order to get to the resolves.
Yep.
All right.
Can we, could we highlight it on the, on the videotape? You know, put a slide up with it, with it on there somehow? Or something like that?
Yep.
When we, when we broadcast it, could we put the text up there somehow?
Right, that would, that would be good. Yeah, that's good.
I think we're ready for the presentation. Well, yes, we have continued the presentation. We have, pardon? We have a Canadian consul, Honorable Aaron Anable is going to speak. I didn't know you were here.
How are you, Mr. Gifford?
I'm well. How are you, sir?
Good.
Welcome.
Thank you. I, I would like to first ask if you have any other residents on your agenda. I, I would, I would prefer to defer to any residents who, who, as I'm not a resident, I, I would like to give that option if there are any residents who are on your agenda.
I don't believe...
That's okay?
Yeah.
Well, thank you for, for considering, for, for allowing me the chance to, to deliver some comments here. I really appreciate it. My name is...
Hang on one second. You, you really should ask the unanimous consent to allow non-residents to speak.
You're absolutely right.
He'll, he'll inform you. We're sorry.
Oh, this is a procedure thing that I, I miss a lot of. I have a co-chair, though. Very good.
You're asking for unanimous consent to allow non-residents to speak.
Did you see my lips move when I...
And if I may, I, I would ask that you first introduce yourself and, and state your residence, and that, I think in this case, that you're not affiliated with a taxpayer or a taxpayer organization in the town of Raymond.
Right. But we're also allowing all non-residents to speak since you're gonna have other people presenting yourself.
Right.
So if there's no objection, we'll allow Mr. Anable to speak.
Yes.
There you go.
I consent.
It's all formal.
I consent. Thank you. So, hello, I am, my name is Aaron Anable. I'm with, I'm a consul with, with the Consul General of Canada in Boston. We're based in Boston, but our territory is New England. We represent the Government of Canada in New England. Main mandate is to strengthen relations between Canada and the region, and also to promote and defend Canada's interests here in the territory. And my comments will, will, will mainly be based on, coming from that perspective, from the Government of Canada's perspective. I'll, I'll speak a bit about the oil sands themselves, as well as their transport through pipelines, and maybe a few comments about the wider relationship. I'll try and keep things brief. I, I know you wanna, you wanna keep going with the program, so I, I do appreciate a few minutes, though. So I'd like to begin by highlighting the depth of the energy interdependence between the United States and Canada. Knit together by a vast, interlocking network of pipelines and transmission lines, Canada is the number one supplier of all forms of energy to the United States. State of Maine is no exception. We sell you petroleum, electricity, coal, and natural gas. In Portland, you bring crude oil from around the world and ship it to Montreal for refining. In 2011, Maine imported over six, 560 million worth of energy products from Canada. The Kibbe Wind Project, which some of you might be aware of, is owned by a Canadian company. It's the state's largest wind farm. I think with Canada as a strong and willing partner on environmental and energy security, we have an extraordinary opportunity to work with the U.S. to deal with the common challenges that we face in moving towards lower carbon economies. Analysis has shown, though, that even with all the energy alternatives, oil will be part of North America's energy mix for decades to come, and Canada's oil sands will play a significant part. The good news is that new and better technology is playing a significant role in reducing the carbon footprint of the oil sands. Thanks to ongoing advances, greenhouse gas emissions per barrel fell by almost 26% between 1990 and 2010. And government and industry are taking steps to reverse those emissions further still. These emissions are now comparable with many conventional oil fields. Studies using recent data place oil sands emissions within the same range of many crude oils produced, imported, and refined in the U.S., including crudes from less secure suppliers. The oil sands also account for about 6.9% of total Canadian greenhouse gas emissions, which is equal to just 0.1% of global emissions. For comparison, U.S. coal emissions are nearly four times greater than, 40 times greater than those of the oil sands. The oil sands are also subject to stringent regulatory review and monitoring, which support our objectives for improved environmental performance. All extraction sites must be returned to their natural forested state by law. The portion of the oil sands that can be mined in open pits represents less than 0.2% of Canada's boreal forest. All disturbed land must by law, must by law be fully reclaimed. And the governments of, of Canada and Alberta have protected over 28,000 square miles of the Lower Athabasca Region and the Wood Buffalo National Park. This is, this is near where the oil sands are developed. While I'm not in a position to comment on the potential for reversal of the Portland-Montreal Pipeline specifically, I can say that oil sands crude has been safely transported by pipeline for over 30 years. Recently cited allegations that diluted bitumen, or dilbit, from Canada's oil sands is more corrosive in pipelines are false. Both scientific research and industrial experience have determined that bitumen-derived crude oil is no more corrosive in transmission pipelines than other crudes. I do not bring studies with me, but if any counselors are interested, I'm happy to follow up and get them to you. The strict regulatory framework with respect to pipelines in both Canada and the U.S. ensures the safety and integrity of pipeline operation. Most importantly, though, I, I want to assure you that the governments of Canada and Alberta are committed to working with the industry to ensure that the oil sands are developed in an environmentally and socially responsible manner. And new technologies, such as carbon capture and storage, and in situ mining techniques, are continually improving environmental performance. Ultimately, Canada and the United States are each other's best customer, our closest friend, and strongest ally with an energy relationship that is highly integrated. Here in Maine, trade with Canada supports over 29,000 jobs in the state. We are your largest export market by far, larger than your next four, seven foreign markets combined. So as you look at, as you consider this resolution, I, I just, you know, I wanna highlight the, I wanted to highlight the wider, you know, elements of the oil sands that, that you may have heard about, and try and, try and address some of the misperceptions that, that you've probably heard. And more than anything, I'd like to just deliver the message that I, that we'd like to keep working together responsibly on issue, this issue as we do on others. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
Mike? You mentioned that the oil from South Portland goes up to Montreal and enters a refinery?
Correct.
That refinery have the ability to refine oil sands? If you know.
It, it's a good question. From what I'm aware right now, in Montreal, they're refining light crude. As to whether that changes, I think that depends on, on, on the market. It depends on a lot of things. It's possible that, that, that someone from the Portland-Montreal Pipeline might be able to, to add to that. But, but I, as, as right now, they are refining light, light crude, as I understand.
Thank you.
And I would just like to add, to your point, Mr. Bruno, and your question was a very good one... All disturbed land must by law, must by law be fully reclaimed. And the governments of Canada and Alberta have protected over 28,000 square miles of the Lower Athabasca Region and the Wood Buffalo National Park. This is, this is near where the oil sands are developed. While I'm not in a position to comment on the potential for reversal of the Portland-Montreal Pipeline specifically, I can say that oil sands crude has been safely transported by pipeline for over 30 years. Recently cited allegations that diluted bitumen, or dilbit, from Canada's oil sands is more corrosive in pipelines are false. Both scientific research and industrial experience have determined that bitumen-derived crude oil is no more corrosive in transmission pipelines than other crudes. I do not bring studies with me, but if any counselors are interested, I'm happy to follow up and get them to you. The strict regulatory framework with respect to pipelines in both Canada and the US ensures the safety and integrity of pipeline operation. Most importantly, though, I, I want to assure you that the governments of Canada and Alberta are committed to working with the industry to ensure that the oil sands are developed in an environmentally and socially responsible manner. And new technologies, such as carbon capture and storage, and in situ mining techniques, are continually improving environmental performance. Ultimately, Canada and the United States are each other's best customer, our closest friend and strongest ally, with an energy relationship that is highly integrated. Here in Maine, trade with Canada supports over 29,000 jobs in the state. We are your largest export market by far, larger than your next four, seven foreign markets combined. So as you look at, as you consider this resolution, I, I just, you know, I want to highlight the, I wanted to highlight the wider, you know, elements of the oil sands that, that you may have heard about, and try and, try and address some of the misperceptions that, that you've probably heard. And more than anything, I'd like to just deliver the message that I, that we'd like to keep working together responsibly on issue, this issue as we do on others. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
Mike? You mentioned that the oil from South Portland goes up to Montreal and enters a refinery?
Correct.
That refinery have the ability to refine oil sands? If you know.
It, it's a good question. From what I'm aware right now, in Montreal, they're refining light crude. As to whether that changes, I think that depends on, on, on the market. It depends on a lot of things. It, it's possible that, that, that someone from the Portland-Montreal Pipeline might be able to, to add to that. But, but I, as, as right now, they are refining light, light crude, as I understand.
Thank you.
And I would just like to add, to your point, Mr. Bruno, and your question was a very good one. And, and no question do I agree that an oil spill is a mess, and, and I'm not disputing that. But, but what, what we're, we're, what, the facts that we're trying to raise is we see no evidence that oil sands is more likely to cause such a spill.
Another question.
Thank you.
I'll just also, I'd like to thank Mister, Mister Cater for, for your presentation, and also for, for, for the use of the term oil sands. It's rare that I hear the actual term used in the United States, so I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have an informational presentation about Portland Pipeline by President and CEO Larry Wilson. About the Portland Pipeline. Good to see you, Larry. Are you back here for my support?
Thank you. During the Q and A, you're right. Thank you very much.
Hey, Louise?
We have a presentation that we're going to-
How's the temperature in the room?
Hot.
Is it all right?
400.
Yeah, it is hot.
Can you turn it down a little?
I can turn it down a little.
So while we bring up our presentation, I'd like to go ahead and, and begin with some introductions. My name is Larry Wilson, and I'm the President and CEO for Portland-Montreal Pipeline. I must tell you that everything for me must take a backseat to the courage of Ethan and his mom's presentation, which I thought was outstanding and, and very touching. So I want to thank Melissa Smith for that presentation. I also would like to thank Mister Willard, Mister Gifford, Mister Hanson, Chief Tupper, who we've had the pleasure of meeting with previously and asked for this opportunity. And so I thank you for the follow-up and giving us the opportunity to present. I know we've already been running quite long. Do you want me to try to stay with 15 minutes?
If you can.
Okay. Well, I, I think it'll really depend on the Q and A, but I don't think, you know, my presentation, I don't think will take that. I would like to share with you that we're represented in this room tonight by over 150 years of pipeline experience. And so I'd like for you to meet some local citizens and residents of the nearby communities. First of all, I'm from Cape Elizabeth, Maine, southern Maine. You can tell from my accent. And I've been in, I've been in Maine. It's been my pleasure for about a year and seven months. And my wife Diane and I love it, and it's a, it's a great pleasure to be here. We have Randy Hughes. Randy is an operations and maintenance supervisor for us. Tom, yep, if you don't mind, Randy. So folks, because I may ask you guys to answer some of these difficult questions. So Tom Hardison, who is our Director of Operations, is here. Ken Brown, who is our Engineering Manager and carries the heavy load. Miguel, let's introduce them to one of our Canadian friends. Miguel is our Area Manager from Quebec, who is here with us. Dave Siri is here. He's the Secretary Treasurer for the corporation. And then Chris is here. Chris Gillis is our Product Movement Manager. So we wanted you to have a chance to meet some of the local employees, many of which have been here for many, many years. And I think, Chris, we're ready to go. I'd like to take you right into a very brief presentation. Then I'll try to go right to the Q and A, because I'm sure there's a lot of questions. So this is a picture of our pipeline station here in the Raymond area, and-
Sorry, they're a little technical.
That's okay. While Chris catches up, we'll just push right through. Portland-Montreal Pipeline is a Maine-based corporation. We go under the corporate name of Portland Pipeline Corporation. We are under the umbrella of a Canadian corporation known as Montreal Pipeline Limited. So we use the name Portland-Montreal Pipeline oftentimes as sort of a descriptor of our system as a whole. The, the company is a joint venture. That joint venture, the owners of which are Shell, Suncor, and Imperial Oil, all Canadian corporations. We've existed since 1941, which was a part of the war effort. This pipeline was built through your community and helped support the war effort to speed and secure the ability of transporting critical energy infrastructure needs to the refineries in Montreal. Now, we mentioned that we have a couple of pipelines, an 18-inch and a 24-inch. One of those pipelines, the 18-inch, has been purged with nitrogen and is not in use today. And that's really driven by the fact that the energy markets are changing. So we don't have the demand for use of the second pipeline. And I think it's important to comprehend and understand that the markets are changing. The 24-inch pipeline is still in service, and we're still unloading ships, as we have all these years, in South Portland, in our world-class deep-water port, and moving that oil still up into Quebec and on into Ontario, again, as we have since about 1941. We do employ 36 employees in the US, 34 of which are here in Maine, six pump stations. We talked about the marine facility there and the mainline facilities. We do have very highly trained, qualified employees. This is a very heavily regulated industry. So primarily, the Maine DEP regulates us in the state, do an excellent job of overseeing and holding us accountable. Additionally, federally, the Department of Transportation, the Pipeline Hazardous Materials and Safety Administration, regulates our activities associated, associated with the pipeline. And they ensure that we have to comply with their regulations. Fortunately for them and for us, it's a core value for us. They don't have to twist our arm. It's our pleasure and our intent and a core value to always comply with the laws and the regulations in the areas in which we operate. Our employees are our strength. They are out here 24 hours a day, seven days a week. If it's Christmas Eve and you and I are by a warm fire and there's an upset on the pipeline, that something needs to be checked, as to reliability or any other concern, they roll. They're out there in the weather. Randy and his team do not sleep when it comes to issues on the pipeline. So they're out there at all times as needed. Protecting the, our neighbors, the employees, our contractors, and the environment, of course, is a core value. Our integrity management programs are something I would like to talk more about if we have time, because they're extensive. But we thought you might find it interesting to see a quick reflection of how much oil we've moved. If you could back up one second, Chris. Five billion barrels of oil have been safely transported. 16,000 ships have been unloaded. And we have the outstanding capability to work with local service providers and also our, our emergency response organizations. Frankly, it's just an outstanding relationship that we share. And we, we believe that we can continue to demonstrate for you that we can do an outstanding job in that arena. Okay, Chris, thanks. I wanted to brag on the employees and the organization, and I appreciate Steve's comments, recognizing the, the work that's been done by this organization. Long before my arrival, there's been a legacy of outstanding performance by this organization. You can be proud of your, your Maine citizens and neighbors who work for this organization, and the contractors and many vendors and service providers who work with our organization. Last year, we won the William Burkett Award from the US Coast Guard for outstanding environmental and integrity performance. We also won what's known as the Distinguished Operator Award for all pipeline companies of our size, size compared to all US-based companies. And then there's another couple of awards that are mentioned there on the environmental and safety side. So it's an award-winning company. That's not the first time this company has won those awards. They've actually won those awards previously as well. So I'm very, very proud of the employees. Thank you. We wanted to talk a bit about some of the questions that you've been hearing and have been raised about integrity management on a pipeline system. You heard some discussion of a tool that's called an inline inspection tool. Now, these devices are run in the pipelines as per the regulation, and sometimes more frequently than regulation. And this is an internal tool. It's a diagnostic tool that you run through the pipeline. And in essence, it will tell you if there are anomalies, if there's corrosion, if someone has maybe hit the pipeline, like a farmer with a plow, for instance. And if there's any anomaly that needs to be repaired, this device will tell us that we need to go in, proactively dig, inspect the pipe, and potentially make repairs. We do these runs very frequently, and again, consistent with the regulations. There's a picture of one in the top right-hand corner. It's a little hard to see, but it's a substantial tool. We also protect the pipeline externally by cathodic protection and coatings. Now, cathodic protection is a technical term, but in essence, it's applying electrical current, kind of a low-amplitude, low-voltage electrical current, and it prevents rust and corrosion from attaching itself to the pipeline. And of course, the coatings also protect the pipeline. We do aerial patrols. If you've seen our, our aerial patrol plane fly through the neighborhood, it, it comes through once a week, and it's looking for landowners, utility operators, people who may be working in the vicinity of the pipeline, and also looking to see if there's any small spill or anything that we need to respond proactively to. We also operate a control center in South Portland, Maine. Now, that control center operates 24 hours a day, seven days a week, never shuts down. And we have very highly trained and competent employees who sit in there and watch this pipeline system operate. So they're monitoring flow, pressure, for any kind of sensitives, any, any kind of sensitivities. They have the ability to shut the pipeline down very quickly if they see anything that looks like a spill. If they see anything that looks like a potential concern, they can literally hit a button. These people work for Chris here. They can hit a button, they can shut the pumps down instantaneously, and they can close valves remotely. And that will help to mitigate and stop the outpour of, of oil if you were to have a spill. And we hope that, of course, never happens. We have an outstanding performance record in the area of spills. We also, of course, constantly performing intensive inspection, maintenance, repairs, and upgrades. So people often talk about the lifespan of a pipeline. You know, how can a pipeline last more than 50 years, or 60 years, or since 19, let's just say, 50, since that's when the 18-inch was built? I think the analogy that helps me the most is I think about the Golden Gate Bridge. The Golden Gate Bridge was built way before our pipeline was built, but would you cross it today? And the truth was, you would. People do it every day. I don't know what the number is, but it's thousands. Well, how is it that that is safe? It's because it was built of quality materials, outstanding workmanship, fine technical expertise and engineering. And then since the, since it went into service in the 20s, it has been carefully maintained, inspected, upgraded, and enhanced. Another example might be the Empire State Building, again, from the 20s, another technological marvel. It's wood, metal, steel. It's, it's a design by engineers. It's craftsmanship. It's protected with maintenance and inspection procedures. And would you get on that elevator and go to the top of the Empire State Building and take a look at the view? I would, and I have. So pipelines, very similarly, can be maintained. We've been inspecting, maintaining, repairing, and upgrading those facilities since we installed them. We'll continue to do that. And that's why the industry says it's an indefinite lifespan for pipelines. They can last a long time. We protect them internally, we protect them externally, and we maintain them and take good care of those pipelines. Now, stringent regulations, we've talked about, ensure pipeline safety and integrity. And you heard Aaron talk about the, the regulations, both on the Canadian side and the US side. These regulations make sure that we do not operate outside the safe design parameters of a pipeline. So some of the misinformation that sort of drives the resolution, you need to comprehend. Aaron corrected some things, and I appreciate that very much. One of the things you have to understand is you've been told by those who want to drive these resolutions up and down our pipeline system, and we've had to go and defend ourselves quite a bit, that we're going to operate at higher temperatures and heat this oil. That is not true. We do not have to heat this oil to move it. You've been told that this is an abrasive. I've heard, I've read liquid sandpaper. I've had, I've had someone sit beside me and interview and say it's like pumping coal. That is not true. Aaron told you, I'm here to support that fact, that it's indistinguishable, the characteristics of this heavy oil and other heavy oils that we have moved through the years. So our pipeline has moved light crude, medium crude, heavier crudes since 1941. This is not a new thing for us, because crudes have come from all over the world, sourced from many fields. Some have heavy crude, some have light, some have medium crudes. So what's different is when you pull a heavy crude out of the ground, like they do in Western Canada, they, they dilute it, so it's more pumpable. I've seen that done my entire 35-year career. Heavy crudes in different parts, it might surprise you, I, I've lived in Texas. And in northeast Texas, there were some very heavy crudes. In fact, in the wintertime, that crude, you could pick it up with a pitchfork. So how did we pump it? We diluted it with condensate, much like they do in Western Canada, so that we could get into the pipeline and we could pump it. So we've shared with you that we don't have a project at this time, and we've been saying that for a long time, although many have tried to convince you that we do. It is still the truth. It is still a fact. We do not have a pipeline project to reverse our pipeline, but we would like to. And we're not hiding from that. We're very proud of the fact that we would love to maximize the use of our very valuable assets. It would be our pleasure to be able to use these pipelines and not have to shut both of them down, as we have one. The markets are trying to move east, right? In other words, the demands have changed. There used to be six refineries in the Montreal area, and there is now one. And that's why we had to shut down our other pipeline. There's a pipeline, there's a refinery in Quebec City, and there are still some in Ontario. We try to supply as best we can, but there is a day coming when some of the projects that you've heard some talk about are going to be moving eastward to Montreal. And that inexpensive crude, more inexpensive than what comes through us from around the world, is going to push us out of that market. So what we're trying to do is look for every opportunity to be a part of a solution to continue to support our neighbors in Canada, for a more secure, a more efficient, a, a safer solution when it comes to energy transportation needs. And we also are trying very desperately to maintain the viability of the pipeline and the viability of our jobs. Let's take a look at the next slide. We want to talk just a little bit and remind you of public awareness. Back up one, Chris. Did I hit all the points I wanted to on the-
I think so.
-slide just before that? Okay, let's go to the next one then. Thank you. Damage prevention is a big part of what we do. We talked about the aerial patrol. You've seen our people probably up and down the right-of-way doing right-of-way maintenance. You've seen us, you've, if you've lived here very long, you've received our brochures in the mail. We try to encourage people to use the 811 system, which is a nationwide system, and now is also used in Canada for one-call activities. So it's vitally important, because third-party damage is still one of the leading causes of a pipeline incidence. Thanks, Chris. Contributions to the community, because when we were here before, we had a good discussion about, you know, why is this important to the city of Raymond? What's in it for the city of Raymond? So really, we just want to explain, you see our annual property taxes we pay to the city of Raymond. That's not big money, right? That's, that's not earth-shattering, but I'm sure that you appreciate the fact that we pay our taxes and have since 1941. We provide access to the right-of-way for our neighbors, although we encourage them to be very, very safe and be very, very careful out there. But certainly, they do use the pipeline for snow machines and so forth. We keep our facilities secure. We work closely with the response organizations. And we're going to do an even better job, thanks to Fire Chief Tupper reminding me that we need to do a really good job with some drilling going forward. And then also a vital partner in the delivery of energy needs in the region. I need to build on that one a little bit. Because our friends from Canada did a great job of explaining to you the importance of that relationship. But I want to make sure you comprehend. We have been a part of providing Canada with their energy infrastructure needs for over 70 years. And the opportunity now is for them to help us by returning the natural resource needs to this community. The fact that the train runs through this community, if it does, and I think it does, and it doesn't originate, and its destination isn't in the town of Raymond, doesn't mean that the train provides no service. The fact that the FedEx driver may just drive through town and not pick up or deliver here doesn't mean that they should be blocked from their ability to drive through the town and that they provide no service. If an 18-wheeler is delivering to your favorite store in Portland, or your favorite store in Conway, does that mean he shouldn't be able to drive through your town, through your area, because it's not providing any quote "service" to this town? My point is, quite frankly, our pipeline system represents, represents the safest, most reliable, most efficient, most effective means for moving North American energy transfer needs. Pipelines are far safer than any other mode of transportation. And the fact that it runs through the city of Raymond and many other communities, the town of Raymond, I think is really a gift from you to the larger community. And we're going to do everything we can to make sure that, as it has operated in the past, that it operates in a very safe and sound- it operates in a very safe and sound way. But you are a component of a critical energy infrastructure, and the products and materials that are made from the crude that travels through here, whether it's going west or going east, are all going to benefit us all as a larger community. And I like what was said earlier about the fact that we all are, frankly, environmentalists, right? I love the environment. I'm in it all the time. I've been on Sibego Lake. I drink this water. There's nothing about who we are that we would want to harm this environment. If we were to have an event, we have the systems in place that we believe can mitigate the amount of oil that would get out. But if oil got out, what you need to understand is that companies like ours, for us, it's easy, it's a core value, we're never going to leave till that thing is cleaned up. We don't have that choice. If we don't stay and clean up a spill, and keep it in pristine, you know, it, it sounds like sometimes that they get to spill the oil and just walk away, and the river is just destroyed. You don't have that option. The company that you watched up there, that's not our company, but I guarantee you, they're not leaving till the job is done. Period. I kayaked that river. I fish for smallmouth bass in the Kalamazoo River, and I walked up and said, read the sign, and this was long before that event, and it said, "You can only catch one fish today, Larry, and don't keep it, or you'll get sick." Why? Because around the turn of the 19th century, they were putting chemicals into that river, and you couldn't eat the fish. The point is this, if you contaminate today, I can't talk about what they did in the turn of the century, the 19th century, but I tell you this, we have outstanding regulations, outstanding regulators. Maine DEP does a phenomenal job. EPA, Clean Water Act, all these regulations say, if we spill something, we have to clean it up. And we don't have the option of walking away. And if we do a poor job of responding or cleaning it up, they will take that spill over, they will clean it up for us, and they will send me the bill. And that's the way that works. So I want you to feel comfort that we can prevent the spills, and I want you to feel comfortable that if something happens, we can mitigate the amount of spill, and then if it does get out, we can and will clean it up. There were comments made that the technology doesn't exist to clean up a spill of heavy oil. I shared with you, we have moved heavy oil. We are prepared. If we have to clean up a spill and the oil sinks, the technology exists, and it's hard, and it's not easy, but it can be done. And basically, it consists of having to go below the water, sometimes with divers, sometimes with skimming equipment, sometimes they'll take air, and they'll float that oil up and pick it up and skim it, and it's tough, but it can be done. We have Osrose Oil Spill Response Organizations located right here nearby, outstanding contractors who can help us to clean these spills up. MSRC in the harbor. We also have Clean Harbors, a number of contractors who really are world-renowned in the business of, if they have to respond to emergencies. So you see a little bit about our payment of taxes and fees, the support of the infrastructure. It's not insignificant, and many organizations that we support. All right, thank you. I talked about the project. I mentioned to you that we don't have anything to hide from you. If we do decide that we're going to reverse the pipeline, and we're going to want to move this oil, and it's often talked about, the heavy oil, the oil sands, heavy oil. There's also light oil, and it's interesting that most of the east coast refineries in the US want the lighter oil. So logic would tell you, if we did reverse, there's a pretty good opportunity, it could be a light oil project. However, if it is a heavy oil project, we're okay with that. We can pump it and move it safely. If we decide to reverse the pipeline, we're going to come see you, and we're going to come out early. We're going to talk to you about our plans and our strategies, and let you know what we're doing and what we intend to do, and then answer all of your questions about, you know, what would you do in the event of this or that? And we can answer those, excuse me, tonight, tonight as well. You've, you've heard this crude is very different. So I made the statement there that it is very, very similar. I think you have to be careful when you think about passing resolutions that are very discriminating. So you kind of pass a resolution that says, well, if you reverse your pipeline, or if you move something different, we just want you to have to go through a series of hurdles. I want you to comprehend the strategy. I know you didn't come up with this resolution on your own. There is a strategy at play, and the strategy is to try to send a message to the state legislature that says, all of these communities don't like oil sands. And with the strength of that, they hope to put teeth into some sort of legislations and regulations that would somehow prevent us from working with our neighbors. Now, I for one would rather receive oil from Canada until the time that we no longer need oil than I would receive it from some of the third-world countries that we currently have to receive it from. I would rather support the best ally and the best friend that we've ever had as a nation than I would some of the nations that are being supported if we're not allowed to do projects like this. Okay, Chris, I think we've got another one or two more slides. We've given you some reference, and we've brought you some packets of information, because I would like for you not to take your facts from me. I'd like for you to do your own research, as I have done. So we've left information, and these are some of the websites that you can visit. Some of these certainly are industry websites where they communicate their technologies, but these, some of these are the National Academy of Sciences, some of these are your federal government, the Canadian government, where they describe what is, what really are the facts around oil sands and around the ability to transport oil sands safely. Now, I was really impressed, I've seen the slides and the videos of, of the spill that was referred to, that occurred to another company. I'm impressed by that, because it's a tough and difficult situation to respond to. What you have been led to comprehend, I believe, is that oil sands moving through the pipeline caused that spill, and that is not true. The National Transportation Safety Board reported on the incident, did the investigation. That's not the oil industry. That's your federal government, investigated that event. And the reason that event occurred had nothing to do with the commodity it was moving. It was a metallurgical concern in the pipe that needed to be identified and addressed before the failure. So if we're going to establish resolutions that discriminate against companies like ours, who have been here since 1941, doing a great job, we need to understand that we're doing it on the basis of the truth, of the facts, not things that are twisted or turned, in my opinion, and made to sound worse than, you know, worse than they really are. So with that, I would like to open up for questions.
Um. The, the.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out how to word this. There's no current proposal officially. You, you mentioned in your statement that you would be open to it, you're hoping for it, or whatever. Is there any permitting process involved in reversing the pipeline?
Well, it's a good question. We get asked, you know, what do, what do you have to do to, to reverse your pipeline? And basically, the pipeline doesn't care if it's flowing this direction or that direction. The way the molecules flow through the pipe, it works just fine in either direction. So what you do is some changes to pump stations, so that it can pump in the other direction. We would have to add potentially some pump stations, depending on the amount of oil that the market might want to move. And then we have to do some work at our South Portland tank farm and out at the Marine Terminal. And so some of that work does involve permits. So it was mentioned that we've already secured some of those permits, and that's true. And we've tried to maintain those permits since back in 2008, when this project was originally thought about and announced publicly. At the time, the project didn't work, because there was not an economic demand as they thought there might be. Frankly, the economy went really south, and, and it just didn't, it just didn't justify. What's looking differently now is the availability of additional crude coming out of Western Canada, which just starts to make some potential sense. We can't do this project anytime soon. The infrastructure has to be built sufficient to get enough oil to Montreal to take care of their local needs, and then have enough oil left over to fill our pipeline up for this to make any sense at all. And that hasn't happened. There's been mention of certain companies filing for permits. There are a number of projects that might bring oil into the Montreal or the eastern Canada area. In fact, we have competition for this project that some of you maybe have read about. So there's a lot of work that has to be done. It's something that's going to take a while to bring to fruition, and we're out there trying very hard for either that project or another project that would be good for our company. And again, it could be a light oil, it could be a heavier oil, but whatever permits are required, rest assured, we'll make sure that we have those permits in hand before we progress with the work. And we're really trying to make sure that onerous permit or assessments that are intended to impede, instead of add value to the process, that those kinds of, of tactics, if you will, are not used, because someone maybe has a, a issue with Western Canadian oil sands. We just want to continue to provide the infrastructure that's here.
Charlie?
Thank you. You done, Mike?
I'm done.
Oh, great. Thank, thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you.
I just have a few questions. Is Imperial Oil also a, a division or somehow related to ExxonMobil?
Imperial Oil does have shareholders, and I would just direct you to talk to Imperial Oil about their ownership and, and their corporation. I can tell you that Imperial Oil is a shareholder of ours.
Of yours, and then...
I, I think it's public information that ExxonMobil...
If you did the research, you'd be able to find if Imperial Oil also had major shareholders of, of, from ExxonMobil?
That, I think there's publicly available information that would say that Imperial has shareholders, and one of those would be ExxonMobil, and, and I think that certainly isn't an issue for us. They provide some of the best practices and procedures and best available technology that the industry uses around the world.
Oh, absolutely. And I'm, I'm just trying to connect all the dots, if you will, just to make sure I'm, I'm clear.
But to be clear, ExxonMobil is not an owner of Portland Pipeline or Montreal Pipeline Limited.
Correct. Now, API is the American Petroleum Institute, and is Portland Pipeline a member of American Petroleum Institute?
Yes.
And I, I noticed you received many awards. You, you are familiar with the long history of the American Petroleum Institute, and it also, in its past, was against lowering the standards of lead in gasoline, and was against lowering the standards of benzene. I've done work on this, these issues statewide many years ago, so, again, I just want to be clear that API is the American Petroleum Institute. And so the information we've received from them comes from that organization through you.
Well, unfortunately, they're here and can speak for themselves. John Quinn is with the API, and he'd be, it'd be his pleasure to be able to present to you as well.
Because I, I noticed we had their information. When you mentioned the condensate, old boil make, a condensate to us is, is water. And to you, condensate is naphtha? Is, is that the...
Condensate does come in various forms, but in essence, it's a petroleum product, naturally occurring, and it's very useful for diluting heavier crudes, as it's used in Western Canada.
Okay, great. It, it's not water, though, condensate, in that, that context?
No, no, actually, I had that question earlier today. It's not the condensate you might find on the inside of your windows on a climate change day, right?
And that may be used, whether it's oil sands or, or any other crude oil? You may use condensate for moving heavy crude?
Absolutely. Condensate works very well as a diluent for heavier crudes. It's used for many purposes. Condensate is delivered, for instance, to refineries and used to make many products. And as I travel with my grandfather, we picked condensate up off the wellhead, and he poured it in the car, and it drove just fine.
Yeah.
I don't think our cars today would run on what he called "drill," but it was a very interesting product. But it's a very light gasoline-looking substance.
I guess at, at this point, because most of us here in the room, and yourself, have had the, the resolves in front of you, and it's unfortunate that everyone else out there doesn't have them, but what is it in particular you're, you're against in these resolves? You mentioned that they were discriminatory, and, and I've, I've read them, I do, I do see a couple of changes I would have made in the, in the first resolve, but the other resolves, if I may, are resolved, call upon the federal government to ensure thorough environmental impact reviews, support the creation of clear federal and state guidelines for tracking the origins and chemical composition of various types of fuel.
I got it. Thank you.
That the town of Raymond will comply with state statutes, that the town of Raymond transmit a copy of this resolution to the congressional delegation, the president, the US Secretary of State, and, and to yourself, actually. I, I guess, except for the first resolve, I, I'm just wondering, what, what language are you opposed to?
Well, I, like you, it would probably have to put it up on the screen, and we'd go through it together, and this is what I would like to offer to you that we would love to do. We would love to sit with you and talk about the resolution, and what the value or what the hindrances might be. Would be more than happy to attend any committee meetings and talk through the resolution. What we would ask you to do is to not pass a resolution until we've had the opportunity to come back and spend time with you and talk about how it could impact us and the community at large. In essence, what we struggle with on resolutions like this, and the environmental community, of which I'm a part of, but I'm not a part of the groups that are going quite so aggressively towards these oil sands and towards pipelines, what they're attempting to do is, is put together a group of cities and townships, so that they can send a message to the state legislature, I believe, and say, "Look at all these people represented by all these cities and towns, and they don't like oil sands, and they don't like pipelines, and therefore, you as a state legislator should take whatever measures happen, you know, are necessary to stop their activities." So it may seem like a very simple resolution with benign words, but I believe it's all a part of a mission, which is to go after the oil sands, and it's a part of a mission to impede companies like ours from doing things that we today have a right to do. And not only that, we have, we're already very heavily regulated, so we don't need discriminatory resolutions, or additional laws and regulations, if you will, that take what is already the job of the federal government, what is already the job of the Maine DEP, and somehow try to expand on that. They're doing an outstanding job, and we have a, an outstanding performance record. So I'm concerned that what underlies these resolutions is something that could be much more significant. I'm concerned that it, it really will inhibit our ability to access open markets, free markets. And if you, if you were to impede the ability to bring the most economical and safest solutions to market, then you can figure out for yourself what the others, the rest of that story might be. Certainly, there's going to be an impact to our citizens' cost at the gas pump, or in other materials that are supplied and provided for by crude oil. So that's my concern. We're well-regulated. We work very hard to do the right things today. We cooperate fully with those who already have these regulations in place. We're law-abiding citizens. We pay our taxes, and we don't think discriminatory resolutions should impede our ability to do the work that we're able to do so well.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Mr. Wilson, the permitting process, is that a federal government responsibility, or is it bi-level, federal-state responsibility?
There is some of both. So on the federal side, of course, we get our license to operate from the Department of Transportation, you might say. So we have to comply with those regulations, or they could shut us down. Also, there's, you've heard maybe a bit about a presidential permit, because we cross international borders. We certainly have the presidential permit today, and we've also been rendered a decision that the federal government would be accepting of our presidential permit, whether it flows in either direction. And as I've already shared with you, we move heavy, medium, and light crudes. So reversing the pipeline and moving heavy, medium, or light crudes, the federal government has shared with us that that permit is applicable and, and would be compliant. But there are some state permits, as I shared earlier, about some of the construction we might need to do.
In, in a, in a short answer, the Keystone Pipeline, what is the relationship with the Keystone Pipeline and your pipeline?
None.
None, at all?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Glenn. Yes, true. That brought up just one other question. What is the relationship?
I was afraid it might.
Yeah. It prompted me to think, what relationship does your pipeline in Montreal have to Enbridge?
None.
So none, none of Enbridge's lines coming into Montreal will, will be, not that that matters, I'm just trying to make a connection here, because on the charts and maps that I saw, it, it looked as though many of the lines that were coming into Montreal, some of those were Enbridge lines.
Oh, that's true. Enbridge has pipe... Enbridge has pipelines that come into Montreal, as do a number of other companies.
Correct.
And so the petroleum industry is a network in the U.S. of hundreds of thousands of miles of pipelines, many of which have been in service for many years. In Canada, there are not as many pipelines, because there hasn't been a need for as many. But again, it's a very extensive network of pipelines owned by many different companies, and many of us interconnect and do business with each other. So your question, I believe, was, is there, like, maybe ownership of Enbridge or anything of that nature?
No, no, just that fact that you just brought forward, that everything connects.
We connect to Enbridge.
Trying to single out Shell versus Imperial versus Portland Pipeline, at some point, it's like the telecommunications lines.
That's a good analogy. We connect to any company that would like to connect to us and do business with us. And we are required by law to do so. We're what's known as a common carrier pipeline company. And what that means is, we have to carry anyone's crude to market that would like for us to do so, and it meets the requirements and the expectations necessary to make a connection with us.
Thank you. Questions from...
Mr. Quinn, do his presentation.
Yes.
Thanks to move things along. John Quinn, Executive Director of the New England Petroleum Council. John, you've asked to make a very short presentation, and we're going to take you at your word. Five minutes.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you for the courtesy. Well, I guess I am being afforded, so I guess I don't have to wait for the all-clear signal. I just, I won't abuse the courtesy. I'll make this very quick. Was it something I said? If you drove here tonight, chances are, the gasoline you drove, part of what was in your tank was probably derived from oil sands. Irving Oil supplies somewhere between 60 and 70 percent of all the gasoline utilized in Maine. Their St. John's, New Brunswick refinery, somewhere in the neighborhood of 30 to 40 percent of their crude oil product that goes into the refinery comes from Alberta oil sands. Tanked there, over 1,800 tank cars are shuttling back and forth across Canada. It's then shipped down by barge to Portland and Boston and other places. Oil sands right now happens to be the cheapest, least expensive crude oil in the world. It's one of the reasons, I think, you pay Massachusetts gasoline prices, and I'm struck by this whenever I come up to go to Sunday River or to Sebago, you pay approximately a dime a gallon more in Maine on gas taxes. But because, in the last year or so, because of the influx of oil sands gasoline in here, you're paying equivalent and sometimes lower gasoline prices than they are in Massachusetts. I just wanted to get that off the board. Your question about the resolves, the basis for the resolves is found in the whereas's. And I am the Executive Director of the New England Petroleum Council. That is an API subsidiary. We represent the refiners who, with the exception of Irving, who distribute product throughout New England, whether it be gasoline or petroleum, or diesel, or even heating oil. But if you go through the whereas's at the bottom of the first page, write down, the next to last one, "Heavy oil sands, diluted bitumen and related oil sands products have a greater likelihood of leaks and spills because of the higher temperatures and pressures involved in pumping the viscous substances through pipelines and specifically at pumping stations." Wrong, wrong, false, wrong. I don't know how I could be much clearer than that. ASTM, it started out as the American Society for Testing and Materials. It's now the International Standard Center for any number of things. Last fall, they made a determination, after reviewing this for some time and reviewing the scientific evidence in front of them, there's virtually no difference between diluted bitumen oil sands and conventional heavy crude. Heavy crude that's produced here in Bakersfield, California, some places in Texas, but more prominently Nigeria, Venezuela, and places in the Mideast. The site that's up on the board that Larry showed you, National Academy of Sciences, they've been looking at this for almost a year. They have a report due out in the spring that looks at the question of, is there any greater risk in moving oil sands, diluted bitumen through pipelines than there is through conventional crudes? I suggest you go and look at the presentations and decide for yourself where the science is and where the open-ended theories are.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn. Thank you, unless you can make one more point, and I think we'll have to...
Okay. I'm happy to do that. Which should I do this? Which one should I go?
Hit the homerun.
I thought I had done that. Apparently not. I guess what I'm saying, bottom line here is, Canada is our strongest ally and our largest supplier of petroleum products. If we have a choice between Canada and the Mideast, I have to hope that the citizens of Maine decide, assuming everything is safe, and you heard the 16,000 tankers since '70, '71. The last 25 years, the Portland Pipeline has pumped through this town more than 80 billion, that's a B, 80 billion gallons of crude oil through the town of Raymond over the last 25 years. And during that time, any issues that anybody here remembers? I think in the entire state of Maine itself, there were a total of 400 gallons, which were contained, all contained, one, two spills, one of three gallons, another one of 450. They were contained immediately. What I'm saying is, it's the safest way to transport what is essentially a very similar product to what's already been out there for many years, and we would hope that you would take that into consideration when you think about this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn. Any questions from the board? For Mr. Quinn? Any questions for any of the presenters from the...
Do we have an opportunity for the public?
Yes.
That's what's happening now.
That's right now.
So, public comment.
Yes, we're asking for public comment. Yes.
Is that an offer of speech or the comment?
The comment. No more presentation.
I'd like you to have to speak.
Yes, step up to the podium and introduce yourself, where you're from, and all that kind of stuff.
My name is Tom Hardison. I'm a resident of Scarborough, Maine. I'm the Director of Operations for Portland Pipeline Corporation, and I'll finish my 39th year with the company in June of this year. And I'd just like to say that there's been a lot of information presented on both sides of the issue here tonight, and one of the things that struck me on one of the earlier presentations was the comment that people are residents of Raymond or newly moved into Raymond and never heard of us. To me, that says, "I'm doing my job. It's my responsibility to keep the oil inside the pipes every day, and we've been doing it safely, very efficiently, with 100 percent regulatory compliance for over 70 years. It's our intent to keep on doing that moving forward." I just ask that before any votes are made on any resolutions, proclamations, take the time to hear both sides of the story, do your research, look at the science, put your emotions aside, and before you make any decisions, make sure you have everything you need to make the right and proper choice.
Thank you. Emily, did you have your hand up? Yes. May I ask you, please, to keep these to two minutes?
Okay. My name is Emily Figdor. I'm the Director of Environment Maine, which is a grassroots environmental organization that has more than 200 members in Raymond. And I am here tonight, first, I wanted to say, I would not be here if what is being contemplated was not about moving an entirely different product, tar sands oil, through this pipeline. I don't have a problem with the current system moving conventional oil. We are here, and communities along the pipeline are considering this issue because of the very different product that's being contemplated coming through Raymond. And communities, including Casco and Bethel, have passed resolutions like you're considering tonight. In Portland, about two and a half weeks ago, there were 1,500 people in Portland expressing their concern about this project, which is the largest rally ever in Portland's history. And that's because we're very aware that this particular product poses a huge concern. The evidence shows that pipelines carrying tar sands oil spill three times more often. The pipelines in the U.S. carrying tar sands oil spill three times more often than pipelines carrying conventional oil, three times more often. That is a very serious increase in the risk of spills. And then, as you've heard previously, when spills happen, the results are disastrous. And that's because conventional oil floats, tar sands sink, and you're dealing with a very entirely different cleanup effort. And then, just to keep my remarks short, the whole idea that tar sands oil pipelines are tightly regulated is not at all supported by the evidence. So in fact, the National Transportation Safety Board, when doing a report on the Kalamazoo oil spill, was extremely harsh in criticizing both the performance of the company, Enbridge, but also of the federal government, of the Department of Transportation, which regulates pipeline safety. And they were quite clear, and we can, you know, I'd be more than happy to get you information in that report that talks about the failure of our federal system in regulating pipeline safety to adequately protect communities from the unique risks that tar sands oil poses to those communities. And in fact, just 10 days before the Kalamazoo spill, Enbridge told federal regulators that they could shut down a spill in just eight minutes, and it actually took them 17 hours. So when you actually look at the facts of what's happened, what is the track record? It is not good. And that's really, you know, that's why we're here, we're here tonight. And just to, again, I know we want to keep these comments short, so just very quickly, one other point that I just wanted to correct is, when the National Transportation Safety Board, when they looked at the cause of the Kalamazoo spill, the problems that they identified, external corrosion and stress cracking from cyclic stress on the pipeline, those are problems that are very consistent with moving tar sands through the pipeline. So, and they talked very clearly about those problems in the report. And then finally, just to get to oil prices, I just, you know, want to state the obvious, which is that oil is a commodity, excuse me, that oil is a commodity that is traded on the global market, and Canada's currently producing about 4 percent of global oil. So the idea that this pipeline could change oil prices in Maine just has absolutely no bearing, in fact. And in fact, when the Keystone XL Tar Sands Pipeline, when the federal government studied that, they found that the project would actually increase oil prices in the Midwest because of some of the specific refineries that would be used. So I would just make sure that we actually have the facts when we're considering this project. And then finally, you know, I think that it's really important that citizens have input on this project, on the possibility of tar sands moving through the community. And I really applaud the Select Board for considering the project and for taking your time tonight, and we'd be more than happy to follow up with a lot more information should you desire it. So thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. Yes.
Dave Seere, Portland Pipeline, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity tonight. And let me thank the chief for wearing a tie. I guess there's two of us here that are doing that, so I appreciate that. The package that you have, I'd like to call to your attention, the PowerPoint presentation, the last page has a series of references. Would really love to have you post those references on the Commission, the Conservation Commission's website. I think that website is absolutely outstanding and robust. I just think it's a little shy on having sort of a balanced comments about the industry, so I would appreciate it if you could do that or at least consider that. Thank you for that. In terms of coming back to the point about this resolution, and on its face, it appears innocuous, we have been dealing with, and very aggressive, quite, I might add, legislation or ordinances in South Portland, in Portland, in this community, in Wyndham, in Bethel, in Casco. Larry and I were in Vermont this morning, Larry was testifying, I was the wheelman between the locations. Two pieces of legislation there, three pieces of legislation in the state of Maine. So when we look at this, we take it very seriously because this is part of an overall plan to stop oil sands, as unfortunate as that may seem. And I need to speak just momentarily on two cities. One, in the city of Portland, there was, I can't remember, 50, 60 people that spoke in the city council meeting there. And what should be noted, and rightly, the council tabled the resolution because they didn't have enough information. All they had was information, it was sparse, it was one-sided, very deliberately so, and they tabled it. And we really welcome the opportunity here to be able to at least vet both sides of the issue in a forum where we feel we have a fair shot at a hearing. In Bethel, unfortunately and regrettably, because of what we understand, our parliamentary procedures, we weren't even able to speak. We had a team that drove there in the fog, under very dangerous conditions, and we're not allowed to speak. Again, thank you so much for allowing us to do that here. With every speaker, there seems to be information that opposes other information.
Sir, we're trying to keep the...
Okay, yep. Just in closing, I think, once again, thank you very much. We're willing to come back and have dialogue with this community and exchange ideas in a forum where we can debate and discuss issues fully. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Could I have a couple of minutes?
Yes, of course you can. I would ask, in the interest of time, not to make points that have been made previously. Even at our age, we can remember things.
My name's Elliot Stanley. I'm a board member of the Sebago Lake Anglers Association. So I'm going to talk about fishing, which is, of course, a primary interest in this community. About 40 percent of the water in Sebago Lake comes down the Crooked River. Up to 70 percent of the fish, of the landlocked salmon in Sebago, come from that river. And there are salmon in all different stages, all up and down the 60 miles of the Crooked River, from Bethel down to the lake. Anglers Association is particularly uneasy about this possibility that we might do something that would damage the fishery in our lake here. And we passed a resolution December 11th, the first one in the state of Maine, by our organization right here in this community. Raymond, many people in Raymond are members. The resolution that we've passed called on an end, a prevention of the proposed transmission of this tar sands oil. We wonder why the various interests that are advancing this notion won't really come right out and say, "We won't have tar sands here. This is not going to happen in this community. We're concerned about..." I keep hearing various, "Well, we don't think we'll do it. It's not in our plan. It's not our intention. We'd like to do it, but we doubt that we'll get around to it." You listen to all of this kind of, what I would call, shilly-shallying about this issue. And I think you've got to take a hard look at what these people are saying and how they're saying it. And they're avoiding, really, making any kind of commitments. And I'd like a commitment in writing. I don't want one just verbally from the various gentlemen here, from the industry. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Can I see any other hands? Okay. Who's... Okay, yes.
You may want to see how many more people want to speak, just to get an idea. You may want to see how many more... I may want to see how many more people want to speak.
My name is Anne Thomas, and I am a resident of Raymond and a resident of South Portland. I own homes on two areas that all have to do with, you know, the community, you know, and the water, the water in South Portland, by the bay, and here, and Sebago Lake. My daughter is an environmentalist. She just graduated from BU, top of her class. She called me about a year ago and said that tar sands was going to be coming through our area, and it's a really big issue, and that I should, you know, look into this, that it's a problem, that it's going to affect all our water supply, and, I'm very nervous, excuse me. And that she said that, you know, we should really be very concerned about this. And I am. I'm very concerned. All my property, you know, is in this area. Everything I own is affected by what's going to be happening here, and I'm very concerned about it. And I, you know, and I also feel that there are so many mixed messages from one group to the next group that I'm not really sure what's going on. I have neighbors that live near me that, you know, are very upset the fact that most of these issues are happening when they're all away. This is an area where a lot of people are seasonal, and many of them are gone, and they can't be here for this kind of, you know, meeting. And they've told me that they don't understand why these meetings can't be done in a time where most of the people in this area are able to come here and speak to, you know, when you have these meetings that are taking place. Thank you.
Thank you. How many others wish to speak? Peter?
Peter Levitt, Two Levitt Road. I will be brief. I guess just a couple of things I heard tonight I got to address. Number one is, I'm all for reducing the cost of gasoline in Maine. I don't particularly care about reducing the cost in China, number one. Number two, some people would consider Audubon to have been an environmentalist, but we know how he got those birds to paint. He shot them out of the trees. That being said, I think that as far as this issue is concerned, it's political. And I think that if everybody was being honest about it, what they'd say is that the resolution is a political tool. And I don't really think we should get involved in political tools. And in fact, if the regulations are required by the state and the federal, then I don't know that we need anything more than that. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. If there are no other speakers, no other comments, then I would like to just say that we have three choices. We can approve the resolution, we can turn it down, or we can table this for the next meeting.
I'd like to make a comment.
Oh.
I see both sides of this. I mean, we are here representing the town of Raymond. We all live in Raymond. We've all lived in Raymond for quite a while. And we understand that if you destroy the water in Raymond, it has not only an impact on the town of Raymond, but you can multiply it for the entire state. But then again, we have a neighbor who's been part of this community since 1941, without any disaster happening. And they've been a good neighbor. And they have people that work and live in this community for the pipeline. You have to balance both of those things. And frankly, I think some of the science here is a little wishy-washy that I heard tonight. I just... And Peter, you and I agree on something.
Wow.
Yeah? Write this one down, Peter. This is a...
That's my art show.
This is a totally political document, and it truly would probably have very little impact at either the state or national level. And if it makes people feel good to pass this thing, well, you know, if we're going to pass a resolution, let's make it balanced, recognizing both sides of this issue.
That means that if we would have to table it and then...
Work on it.
Work on the resolution.
Yeah.
I mean, a couple of people here to work on the resolution.
If my emotions were looking at that Kalamazoo spill, I'd be going on, "Let's pass this resolution right now." That was heart-wrenching to see the destruction of the environment there. But this is not the same company. This is a different company that has a very good track record. And I would just hate to punish the company for something that wasn't them.
I agree. Any other board comments? Charlie?
I have a parliamentary inquiry and then comments. So, my inquiry would be, my understanding is that the wherethes, as presented to us, represent the preamble or the basis for discussion of the resolutions. So, therefore, a motion could be made to accept the resolutions with what I see to be only one or two changes that may be considered political as how they are written. And the resolutions themselves could be passed, and you could then, once you moved the wherethes preamble, those could be then tabled for further discussion. But the resolutions themselves could be passed tonight. And that's my parliamentary inquiry, is that, in fact, is that understanding correct? That the preamble is basically a separate... It would have to be an amendment, or you could actually leave the preamble wherethes off and just have a motion for the resolves.
You can amend the document. That's your question.
Right.
You can amend the language in the document.
So, for instance, if I may continue, the only, and I don't find this much different than the proclamation we just passed on congenital diaphragmatic hernias in adults and children, that it presents a position of this community that I don't see that. I see it as informational, because that's what most of these resolves are. If you all had them in front of you, you'd be able to read those resolves there. They are fairly benign. I'm not one to want to read into the politics of what API or Portland Pipeline or Clean Waters Coalition or National Resources Council is trying to do here. What I do know is, we're a water-based economy in the town of Raymond. Today, I use much more water than I use petroleum product. Our basis for our existence in Raymond, in our tax base, in our waterways, is a local issue. As my brother might not be interested in the price of fuel in China, I'm not really concerned with what Bethel, Maine, or South Portland does. I'm most concerned, and I'm elected to be concerned, with the people in this room who are from Raymond, Maine, or taxpayers, or representatives of organizations who are taxpayers in Raymond. So, that's the primary interest, just as we had the earlier proclamation, is to provide some guidance and some direction coming to us from the community. So, in that light and in that spirit, I don't see this as being something that we necessarily have to move on to the next two or three meetings in order to discuss. It's one that we could probably dispose of tonight.
Do we have a motion?
And I do. I will make that in the form of a motion that this board pass the resolves without the... And we can certainly talk about the preambles in future to discuss the science, because that's where what, again, my brother has called possibly inflammatory political rhetoric may reside. But in the resolves, the only concern I would have is in the first resolve, that now therefore be it resolved that through the adoption of this resolution, the town of Raymond expresses, I would take out the word "serious." We're still to determine, is this any more serious of a concern than any other product that may be going through that pipeline? And I may just say, in addressing that issue of engineering, if this were, if the Portland Pipeline was proposed right now, there was no existing pipeline in the town of Raymond, and this wasn't 1941, I seriously doubt the town of Raymond or any agency would have allowed that pipeline to go six times under the Crooked River, to have gone under Panther Run, or have been 1,000 feet away from Sebago Lake. I seriously, seriously doubt that. So, when we talk about engineering, there's also behavioral, social, political engineering and improvements and upgrades that we've made since 1941. So, anyway, I digress, as I usually do. Regarding the transport of heavy oil, and you can all read it, I would take out of that first one, the "serious" and remains deeply concerned. We remain concerned about the risks that such transport of heavy oil sands may create in relation to public health and safety. And I would also take out the word "through Maine," because, again, no offense to our sister communities, to our sister countries, our sister states, my concern here is what passes through the town of Raymond. So, I would make that through Raymond and remaining concerned, instead of deeply concerned, and then pass the resolves as written. And I would need a second.
Anybody have a motion?
That's a motion.
Do we have a second?
Good luck with that. Well, I can give it to you. It's all this...
He may not have to if he doesn't get a second.
Yeah, all that minus those three words.
Do we have a motion to table?
Well, first, is there a second?
First, is there a second to Charlie's motion?
No, there was no second to Charlie's motion.
Not yet. You haven't stopped talking in a long time.
So, is that a second? Is that a second?
Seeing there's no second, I will make a motion to table.
A point of order? I believe, and it would just maybe be more of a parliamentary inquiry, that in order to table, you have to have a motion on the floor, a question. We have no question on the floor. The correct response would be to postpone to the next meeting.
Same thing.
Well, number one, as a postponement to the next meeting, because there's no motion on the floor, it would have to come up as the first item on our next agenda.
You actually do have something on your agenda where an action was asked to be taken.
But it's not a motion. I made a motion, we have no motion on the floor. And so, in order to table, it has to be a question and a motion.
That's not true.
Well, that's what I'm asking is, so that is the decision, that anything can be tabled regardless.
That's correct.
So, you're basic...
Well, Mr. Chairman.
Well, do you want to put it off to the next meeting, or do you want to table it to the next meeting?
I just intend to table it to the next meeting. There's a motion.
Okay, do we have a... I made a motion, table.
And I seconded it.
Okay.
So, I'm afraid to say comment.
So, what you, I get your...
We have a motion and we have a second. And now I'm asking for commentary. I'm not really asking for it.
Table it, and there would be no discussion, correct?
You can't discuss a tabling motion. What would happen, this would show up on the next agenda under...
But first, there's a point of order to the chair. So, he has to make a decision to...
Table it or not.
No, to overturn, to deny my... He has to deny my inquiry. My point of order. Denied?
Denied.
Appeal?
Okay.
Appeal. I need a second to appeal. Okay, thank you.
So, you have a motion to table on the floor. It's a second, there's no discussion on tabling motion. All in favor? Opposed?
Number one.
Thank you.
It will be on next month. Thank you very much, everybody. It was really...
I'll make some room.
It was an eye-opener.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. You're not driving all the way back, are you?
Thank you.
Good. Nice place to stay.
Well, you're better off than that. I don't ask any comment.
Larry, nice to have met you. Very nice to have met you.
Thank you. Wake up in Naples, you'll see Long Lake. You've been up there.
I learned a lot.
A little bit of reading involved. Thank you. Whatever. Thank you. Good to see you. It was a good presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Glad to meet you.
She took Peter's back. Good presentation.
Nice to meet you.
You got a little teary at the end.
Reminded me a little bit of Clint.
We have one to deal with. Do you want me to yell?
Thank you.
Please, people, there's a meeting going on here.
Pardon me? Just to push off any work on this till the next meeting. It'll come back next time, next month.
Thank you very much for coming, folks.
No. Of course you can. If he wasn't give you that, I'd give you mine. I don't have to have that.
I am actually...
John Rand?
I appreciate the invitation. I can really... John Rand?
Is John still here? Do you go?
He's probably there.
You gotta take a deep breath. John? Folks, please.
Do your interview out there.
Folks, we have a meeting going on.
We have a meeting.
Do your interview out there.
Thank you, folks. But stop talking, please. Leah, thank you. Thank you.
Peter, you got your front row seat. Couple rows closer to us, though.
Now everything seems normal.
Right. Now we're on track.
Conservation Commission Tax Acquired Property Recommendation, Chairman John Rand.
Yeah.
Raymond Conservation Commission. Yes, sir. You do have to identify yourself.
John Rand, Chairman of the Raymond Conservation Commission. I understand you folks wanted to get some clarification on tax-acquired property recommendations that we had made last year.
Yeah.
In particular, are we talking about map 30 lot 16 off of Haskell Ave? Do I have that right? It's the one property of all that we've talked about, that you folks have sent along to us to review, that we recommended the town hold on to. And I have a couple thoughts as to our rationale for that.
Haskell Avenue, you know what? I've lived here for over 30 years. I don't know street names. I know where the places are. But Haskell, is that the one where the camp is? Off Raymond Hill? Off Raymond Hill?
Off Raymond Hill. It's, here's Route 85.
Laurel...
Copatose's up in here. Here's Route 85. The beach is like right here.
So, it's Amy Davis Way? Yeah.
Yeah, Amy Davis Way goes in there, it's right.
And then it sweeps the rack around.
Sharp point there.
And that goes back.
So, it's a patch of land right behind a real dense section of shoreline.
And it was, there were actually two, but...
There were two parts, lot three there is one. So, our thinking was as follows, that of all the properties we looked at, which was four or five that day, and a couple more you sent along in this past fall, that property had a special character to it, and those features that we thought were valuable were, it is an undeveloped parcel of acre and three-quarter that is nestled in a highly-developed piece of shoreline on Crescent Lake. And it offers exceptional or good opportunities to store stormwater off the roads there. And I believe it's also on map sandy gravel soils, map sandy gravel aquifer. So, it likely serves as a recharge area for some of the private well points and private wells right along that stretch of shore. There's probably 40 lots, 35 lots right there. And... And the other, the other important piece is that, that studies have shown when you get over about ten percent of impervious surface in a watershed, you start seeing water quality impacts. And you could do that at, at any, any scale. If you break this point into a, into a watershed and look at the impervious surface that's already there from roads and, and roof, you can see that we're at a high percentage of impervious surface. So, there's a lot of runoff, there's a lot of erosion potential. This area of our shoreline in Crescent Lake would benefit from having undisturbed forest canopy left in place to reduce the impact of, of stormwater and erosion and resulting water quality impacts. And I think it also probably serves, you know, it serves as a, as an investment in maintaining the groundwater quality around there, which everybody relies on for, for drinking water.
All I can think of is that you want to put a pipeline through there or something.
I was gonna say it'd be an ideal spot for a loading dock. Boats could come up to tenny, we'd be all set.
I'd go with a water well.
Water, or it could be that.
Raymond Spring Water.
Raymond Springs. But, you know, it was, had a assessed value of eighty-three thousand. And it just had, when we walked around and looked at it in the rain, it was a, I remember that, I think you were with us, Sam. The, it just has a special character of undeveloped land with some high pines there and, and sandy soils underneath on the maps anyways. And there were certainly plenty of other of the lots we looked at, like the rest of them, that looked much more suited to sale and, and providing some revenue, revenue for the town. It's not a shorefront piece, you know, it didn't really have exceptional views or, or value associated with that. I think most of its value was just because it was, it was bigger, acre and three-quarter.
If I recall, John, it wasn't buildable either.
And a lot of it was in RP, that's right. There's a stream that runs down through it, cold, cold water stream. And so there's, there's setbacks associated with that. Danielle, you put that. Most of it was in resource protection.
Okay, so I, I have a question on how does this work? I mean, we have a recommendation from the Conservation Commission. The town would actually own the property. Taken off the tax rolls, becomes a piece of town property. What role does the Conservation Commission at that point, do they maintain it? What does the Conservation Commission do with it?
So, it's a good, it's a good point, Joe. And I think, you know, what we talked about when we walked around it that day was, was the idea of trying to get some kind of local stewardship that would oversee the property. And, and I suppose one other route to go would be to offer it first for sale as a, you know, as an unbuildable lot and to sell it at a, at a, at a steep discount.
So, someone who lives in that area may want to buy it to buffer.
To buffer.
Privacy.
Exactly.
Yep.
And, and that would meet our objectives, I think, that, that we saw the, the day we walked around it, of keeping it undeveloped as a place for, you know, nature to exist in what is a pretty densely developed. If you look at our tax maps of the town of Raymond, this is probably in the top three of, of density.
So, so the town takes it over, which we can do anyway. We could still offer it for sale.
We could.
And you're asking us to place a restriction on the sale, though.
And so it would, that's, that's the direction we would recommend going.
Yes, Chairman.
Chris might have some input on that.
John, there's, there's also a right-of-way to Crescent Lake off of.
From the property.
From Haskell? It's those, yeah. Yeah. And as I, as.
Has access to Crescent Lake.
Right. So, there, and when Chris wants to jump in on this, I mean, is there a possibility that it would, that, that piece could harbor, if you will, the parking of two or three vehicles or four vehicles? Or do we still get into the problem of how do we police it? How do we keep two or three vehicles off it? I mean, we do lack in certain places around Raymond access to the ponds and lakes. And it.
You're talking about a public access to Crescent Lake?
No, well.
Or a pedestrian, a parking.
So, you know what, so someone who wanted to access Crescent Lake could park at this place, say limited to five cars, with it designated. Would that, would that in itself, if it wasn't paved over, would that create a detriment to that piece of property of being filtration?
Yeah, I mean, they call it gravel services impervious, which seems crazy because you'd think it all soaks in. But in fact, it, it does tend to runoff more, stormwater runs up more from gravel. So, that would be going a bit contrary to our direction of a kind of a natural preserve place. I mean, it's big enough to have a little trail system around it, you know, be modest, but for, for kids or older folks to enjoy some undeveloped space setback for sure. You know, there's some uses we could retain, I think, for sure. And, and, you know, it might even, maybe there'd be low-impact, you know, seasonal camping or something on it. Ideally, it would just be an undeveloped parcel that someone would keep in a buffered natural state.
I, I think when you start talking public access, you, you need to be careful because I think the neighbors would have some rights. Because that, that access to Crescent Lake, is that an easement? Is that a private easement? I don't know.
Right.
So, you, you gotta be real careful to say, well, we're gonna just allow people to park there and walk in the Crescent Lake. You, you're gonna have to do some title searching.
Well, and I was going on the presumption on that, that it was listed as a right-of-way.
I can speak to it to a little bit.
But not in detail, I haven't looked at this property, I haven't looked at what's in the deed. Typically, when these small lots were developed, they developed them with fifty-foot or even twenty-five-foot waterfront lots. And then wherever there was a, a space that wasn't a desirable area, they'd make a right-of-way to the lake for back lots. Now, I think what, John, when he referred to this area being in resource protection, I think it's probably closer to stream protection rather than resource protection. I don't think it's associated with a big enough wetland to be considered on our tax map as resource protection. But it still has a hundred-foot setback for any structure or campsite.
From, from the street.
From the street. Therefore, there's probably not much room on this site to do building, camping, even parking, without me researching it. I don't know what the width of the lot was, John, wasn't it a hundred and sixty-four feet by?
Uh, there's a two-twenty line there.
But we don't know where the brook goes.
Through it.
Through it, so.
Right, right.
You know, two hundred feet, a hundred feet each way, you might have a totally unbuildable lot. Without me looking at it, I can't answer the question. But to go back to the right-of-way issue, if the town owned this, anybody from the town would have a right to go to that property and access the lake through one of the right-of-ways down on Haskell Avenue, which there are several. Some of them are not used at all. Some of them are.
Already, we already have that?
Yes. Not for a Raymond resident, you'd have to be a, a lot owner of a back lot or a lot in when that subdivision was created back in the twenties or thirties.
John mentioned selling a lot. If, if the town acquires that property, why would I, as a private landowner, why would I want to buy it?
That was what I was thinking.
You would think.
It's already a buffer.
It's already a buffer.
And you say cheap, so you would think that E. Carey, before he lost it, would try and sell it on the cheap to his neighbors anyway, knowing that that's all he had for the bikes. So, it's.
Having been through this in another town, the only reason that you would buy it would be if you had an adjacent property and had some development plan that would be impacted positively by this additional land. I remember one time holding an auction and selling a piece of property about the size of this room for forty thousand dollars because the person next door wanted to build a garage and needed it.
These properties have been up for sale before, and we didn't get any offers.
Right, this may be something different, but that's the only, that's the only way you'd get the value, is if somebody needed it.
I would just caution that if the town acquires it, that we don't create a situation where we cause.
Public access.
Public access where he's trying to conserve a piece of property and conserve a piece of the lake, which I'm totally for, but we've got to be careful that we don't allow it to be a public access.
So, it sounds like we ought to do, we gotta do a little more homework on that right-of-way.
I, I think so.
And, and, Chris, I mean, can you and Danielle help out with that?
Oh, absolutely.
I'm working in town, so I'm kind of useless to Raymond. Not that I was any type of a fool.
Mike?
So.
We can take the right-of-way off the property.
And, and if the town held it, we could, that would be one.
If we own it, we can take the right-of-way off, right?
That would be a legal question for the town attorney.
You mean, you go down and you, you file a.
You extinguish the right-of-way.
Right.
Right.
Well, the, the right-of-way would still be there for other landowners.
Correct.
Right, it just wouldn't be a part of the deed reference.
But you could extinguish it for part of that lot.
For that property.
I, I believe, you could probably do that.
Well, then it.
Could you enforce it now?
Right, but, but, I mean, then that takes away the question that it's, that it is legally public access.
That would be one route to go. I mean, the other would be, why don't we look at, at the building window and, and if it is at all buildable? It didn't look like it was on, on your initial look, Danielle. You know, if it was buildable in, in some really modest way, in some portion of it, and the rest of it could stay undeveloped, then it could go, and that person could have a privately-owned lot, the town could sell it, we could be, you know, getting the value of the RP that's already on it. And the right-of-way would go to the new, you know, go with the land with the new owner. So, it seems like we ought to learn about the right-of-way and learn about what kind of building window might exist on it. Or does.
If this, if this lot's unbuildable, then Kurt's here, like he was earlier tonight telling us that that eighty-three thousand dollar assessed value is, is.
Not right.
Not right, so.
It's gotta have some value.
Not eighty-three.
Not eighty-three grand, so at, at some point, you're, you're collecting no taxes on it. And we can't, and it's, you can't sell it as a buildable lot. And if you don't have a neighbor situation like Don outlined, we own it, we take the public off it, and, and it, it serves the purpose that John outlined earlier, which is it's always gonna be a drainage point, it's always gonna be a collection point.
A natural buffer, buffer area and a highly developed section of shoreline. I mean, it, the stuff that Raymond Waterways does all around the watersheds, you know, patching up runoff, this serves that purpose to reduce that.
Have we already taken the other four properties?
Those top four, we have, oh, well, you aren't looking at my list, so.
Well, we have the top one, right?
Yeah, we're talking about the top one.
Yeah.
Oh, we have already acquired the other four, right?
Yes.
So, we're just.
It was just that one. It's just that one.
We have, yeah.
More information on this one. Is my guess. Right, yes, Charlie?
And, and I, I agree, if we can get that information and then have John Conservation Commission come back to us with something that we can then consider. And I, I would also like to ask John that you go to the commission also and, and ask and, and discuss because we've discussed that at this board level about putting this process more formally within the tax-acquired property policy of the Board of Selectmen. Though this is working this time as I think I would envision it working with an open discussion and a back and forth and seeing if retention is worth, has a value to the town. But right now, in the absence, this is being done as a courtesy. Whereas in other towns, other models that we looked at, it was an automatic that under tax-acquired property, as the Board of Selectmen reviewed retention for its value to the town, it was also sent to either a planning board or an open space committee or a conservation committee for them to also look at other angles as to why retention. The town might look at it, the Board of Selectmen might look at it and say, it's a great place to put a cell phone tower as an example, not to be inflammatory.
Yeah.
But that, that would be a consideration.
Is that a political statement?
Where's Peter going, we need him, yeah.
It's, it's what we would tend to look at, but by broadening that policy, by putting it formally in the process that as we're looking at these properties, that list is automatically going to.
Send it, send it to us, as Danielle has been doing. If you don't hear from us, we're not interested. If you hear from us, we'll go take a look at it. And we'll do our best to, to make that a, a positive communication back that we looked at them all and none of them are, are interested. I know the first shot that Danielle sent across our bow in the fall, we just, we, we, we didn't pick it up and, and.
But what I'm asking you is to also consider it being formalized as a request to the Board of Selectmen to put that in our tax-acquired policy, tax-acquired property policy. So that when Danielle isn't here, or John isn't here, and Joe isn't here, that there is a.
That process goes forward, yeah.
That says, this is what the Board of Selectmen do, once they take these properties over or they're considering the taking of these properties, that this issue of retention is, is looked at by the Conservation Commission as well as the Board of Selectmen for input.
So, I will make a motion to table this item. Don't show up again next meeting.
We'll, we'll get some more info on buildability and the right-of-way and see what model works best for.
We just don't want to put it off till the next.
Yeah, you want to just put it off.
You want to table it or put it off?
You have an item on your agenda. That means you must deal with it in some fashion. You just can't say, I'm putting it aside.
And that's why I would postpone till the next meeting.
I have to warn you, Joe. I have to. I have to permit to carry your gun.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Yep.
Okay, we're getting pretty close to shut-off time. I don't think we're gonna make it all the way through this, but Hank, I'd like to, is Greg Foster still here? He's right, yeah, I was right behind him.
Can't push him off, he's hardworking.
Hey, Greg, I thought you'd be out the door a long time.
I love this too much.
Uh, this is, well, go ahead, Greg. Tell us about, we've already, I think this has already been discussed.
Yeah, it's kind of formality. I had a work order contract that I sent to you and the attorney, the attorney looked it over and it came back very different and unrecognizable. But in the meantime, we resolved that there were some things that I, I believe may have been misunderstood about my relationship with the town and how I'm paid and a few issues like that that were resolved on the work order. And I reviewed it, I don't even have a copy, I don't know what I did with it, but it's.
I have two.
And we have it right here.
To me, and it's just a matter of whether it's acceptable to you. And Don reviewed it and one thing they asked for was liability insurance proof that I have insurance, heirs and emissions in this case, and also auto. If you want me to pass these around, this, this is.
We don't all need one, probably only Danielle needs one.
You just need to get a copy and put it with the contract.
I, this is actually for another client. It's just to show that I have it, it's recent, but I will get one that says the town of Raymond on it.
So, this contract allows you to continue the work that.
Yeah, this is, enables us to do the timber management program and plan. And so it's been vetted by the town attorney, looked over by staff, we're recommending approval. We'd like to get going as soon as practicable.
I'll make a motion to accept the contract as put forth.
Second.
Discussion?
Charlie? Just, from what I understand, this is, you, you'll start marking now, but you have eighteen months to actually do, complete the work with the possibility of an extension from this board, so.
Yes.
We.
I, I think that's right.
And, and based on the process that it's gonna take to go out there and mark it and quantify it and then bid the work out, and of course, the way I read this contract is you'll be bidding the work out and you'll be the general contractor. That, that there won't be a contract with the, with the town for the timber for the cutters.
No, that's not correct.
And the marketers or.
I represent the town as an agent in terms of selling your wood for you. I represent your best interests. I marked the lot based on good forestry principles. And then I, I will announce a bid to potential logging contractors in that, in your behalf. in your behalf in selling that timber to individual, an individual contractor. And that person will have a contract with the town of Raymond and me, as your agent, to buy the timber from the town and sell it on the open market and pay the town for the timber as it's sold.
So, so that RFP, you will put out the RFP or the town will put out the RFP?
Well, I'll put it out.
And then you will come to us with a recommendation on who to choose?
Correct.
But then the proceeds, from what I, how I read it, but I might, might have not grabbed it, the proceeds all go to you, you take out your percentage and then forward the rest of the money...
That's correct.
To the town. So, the, the cutter isn't, they're gonna send us a check and then you're gonna take a piece. It's all gonna go through you.
It's all gonna come to me.
That's, that, that was the point I was trying to make, is that you're our agent. And so, therefore, you then subtract your fees from...
I always assumed the agent, in effect, I'm the town, representing your best interest, including taking the money and my salary out of the, the income from the stumpage payments.
Does anyone second my motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
You got a typo on the last page, on the signature page.
We'll blame that on the lawyer.
It should be Timber State and not Tyber State.
Was that Tiger?
Tyber. Tyber, like in Rome.
The M is missing, missing.
So, move and second it. Discussion? All in favor?
Mr. Chairman?
I agree, yes.
I would like to ask for, uh, a consent on the orders of the day in order to move, uh, old business, consideration of amending or, uh, well, it, it should have been consideration of repealing the conditional zoning district.
Sure.
Uh, and, that, just so we can dispense with that.
I'll, I'll make a motion to schedule a public hea-, a dual public hearing with a select board and the planning board to begin the process to repeal the conditional zoning that was passed in two thousand ten.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
It just means if you say unanimous, then you don't have to ask.
Still have to have a public hearing?
No, no, I just said unanimous.
Unanimous.
So, when you say that, then you don't have to ask, you know, opposed.
You can't vote both ways, so...
It's not unanimous, right?
Alright, it's ten o'clock at night, Peter. Do we have anything else on the agenda that needs to be dealt with? No, and I, I was gonna suggest...
Well, the, the certificate of notice is something we should do, Greg.
Which one?
The quick claim deed, certificate of notice, and the, um, the planning board. Well, no, 'cause you guys are gonna have a public hearing. Uh, the last two, J and K.
I think you need to do J because the people want to, uh...
They're, they're looking to sell. Those are the people who, um, are looking to pay off, have paid off their forty thousand dollars of back taxes.
So, they've paid up, we need to discharge the lien.
Right, correct.
So, I would, I would move to postpone till the next meeting. G, uh, H, and I.
Second.
There's more.
Well, and then, okay, and I, and then, uh, if you wanna get them all in there, K.
You don't have to do old business.
And old business is done.
I thought Danielle said she wanted K.
Oh, you wanted K, okay. So, at least, uh...
G, H, I.
Okay. And then we can probably dispense pretty quickly with town manage-, public comment and town manager.
Yeah, scholarships and... Information on J. Yeah, but you're not in the right one. This one, now you're gonna go to this one to get the information.
Oh, yeah, that's on the table further. So, I, I may ask to only, only because we have, uh, a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals here tonight, whether we should postpone I, I guess I would ask that if that's an important item, as we've asked Danielle, or you're also on appeals, right?
One, the secretary, they don't have any meetings coming up.
They don't, so, so we'd be all set with that to go, so I, I would postpone.
So, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve a quick claim deed for Ernest and Shirley Fielder to discharge lien per map sixty-six, lot thirty-five, located at forty-two Wittenmore Cove.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Next. When's K?
Oh, yeah, fiscal warrant. Eight fiscal warrants.
No, wait, we're, we're on item K right now.
Right here. K is consideration of Fri Island certificate of notice.
This is just, um, an extra measure that the planning board opted to take in order to just show who the abutters are, where we're sending the notices, and on what schedule and the dates that I've already done. Because if you've been following this application, oh, it's another one of the highly contentious ones. So, we're just doing an extra measure of due diligence to show, like, what, what the processes that we're doing, so...
I'll make a motion to accept a staff recommendation of notice.
Second.
Discussion?
Why do we have to approve this, why don't you just do it?
It's a part of the process, like, so...
I'm just asking.
There's the planning board that's asking for this?
Uh, the, yeah, the plant, well, the, more like the planner and the town attorney, so...
Is this, is this similar to the, the select board has to certify?
Yes.
It's the same issue we had when we dealt with the cellphone tower?
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
That we now know is a process that we, we should adhere to.
Yeah.
Moves and seconded. More discussion? All in favor? Opposed?
Public comment.
Where are we now?
Public comment?
Public comment.
Public comment, yes, any public comment, yes.
I gave you a couple of pages of, uh, where it asks, is there probably a, a solution looking for a problem. My name's Ted Davidson, Sebagu, by the way. It just, uh, uh, I'd just like to be on your agenda for next month. It's just about thirty-seven billion gallons of drinkable water that we throw in the ocean every year. So, if I could, I gave you a couple of copies of that. I'd like to be back next month and say something about it. Would you be okay?
Yeah, it's, it's fine, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
No problem, yeah. Yes, Peter?
Peter Levitt to Levitt Road, very brief comments. Um, just, uh, first of all, my, my understanding is, and, and it has been my experience here, that, uh, the current and previous parliamentarian, Mr. Bruno, has done an excellent job as the parliamentarian. Uh, I would like to...
Peter, Peter.
I know, I know. I, I, I would like, I would like to recommend this, however. This has been my research, so, and I'll, I'll rely on Ollie to correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, serving as parliamentarian at meetings, and this comes from the Parliamentarian Association, uh, is, the role of parliamentarian at a meeting is to be a resource to the chair, to assist the chair in the conduct of the meeting. The parliamentarian sits adjacent to the chair and unobtrusively gives the chair help, guidance, and support during the meetings. I think the chair would agree that that happens, and I'm not asking you to change chairs. The chair can and should consult the parliamentarian when not certain on how to rule on a question or proceed in circumstances of questions of order. So, okay, we're all, I think, pretty much in agreement that that's the, the function. What I would ask as a, as a future agenda item is if the board would discuss, based on some comments recently about transparency and being, uh, clear that there is no conflict of interest, that the board consider an agenda item to discuss if it, if it, uh, i- if it is appropriate for a chair to also reside, uh, have that responsibility as the parliamentarian. If it's, and I'm not saying that there's anything in the bylaws that preclude that or prevent it, Robbins doesn't say anything that I can find about it. I'm saying for, for matters of transparency and so that there is no appearance of a conflict, if in fact, the role of the parliamentarian is to advise the chair, it just seems that it, there is a question, or could be a question, if in fact, both of those responsibilities reside in one individual and whether or not that is too much, um, influence. Thank you.
I don't understand.
I don't either.
So, so basically, if the, the primary role of the parliamentarian is to advise the chair, should that be, the, both those responsibilities reside in one individual, the chair is also the parliamentarian? I just ask you to consider that as far as an agenda item in a discussion. If in fact, for the sake of transparency, so that there aren't any questions about rulings, uh, it's, it's hard for Joe, when he sits in the role of the chair, to say, "Now, I'm going to ask the parliamentarian if, for guidance," and it's, and it's him.
That happens in my head, Peter.
I, I under-, I understand, I understand.
One ear beats up the other.
It's the unobtrusive point, the part that I don't see here.
Oh, the unobtrusive, no, I think he's, he's doing that fine, I don't think you have any complaints to this, Sam. I think that's totally appropriate. Anybody that would say that that's not appropriate, um, the fact that Joe is advising you on the order and the like, doesn't understand what the parliamentarian does. That's exactly the role of the parliamentarian. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. I understand now.
If I may ask, Ms. Levitt, uh, is there a history in, in Raymond of this occurring?
Yes.
Thank you.
I don't get it. It's, it's late, Sam, alright? I do get it. Alright. Consideration of quick claim deeds, are we there?
We, we already did that.
Yeah, you're town manager.
Town manager report.
Yes, rapid fire round. Confirmed date of next meeting, March fifth, two thousand thirteen.
Good.
We have budget finance, the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth.
Alright. Where are we being now?
Yep, I keep lying, if you're good with that date.
We already had March fifth as the budget, budget and select meeting in March fifth.
Right.
Supposedly our budget vote.
The fifth is our meeting. The twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth is with budget finance.
Okay, we're ready to go?
Yeah.
Well, I think the twenty-fifth is just budget finance.
Just budget, yeah.
And then the twenty-sixth is, is combined.
Okay, the, uh, the Raymond Beautification Committee is seeking volunteer, a volunteer coordinator for Raymond Beach. Sharon has sent me, Sharon Dodson, who heads that group, has sent me an email. It says that detailed information about this is on the Raymond Beautification Committee Facebook page, and, uh, that can be reached from the town's, uh, website. I'm not much of a Facebooker myself, but I, but apparently that's easy to do if you want to do it. Seeking proposals, let's see, we're seeking proposals for a private sector management, manager at Raymond Beach. They're due, um, February twenty-second. Submission materials and information is also available at the town website, www.raymondmaine.org. Scholarship applications are being accepted. They're available at the town office or at that website. The submission deadline on scholarships is April thirtieth. Compost bins are for sale. More information and order forms are available on the town website. The deadline for that order is April twentieth. The Sebagu Lake Rotary Ice Fishing Derby, a decision will be made whether the derby goes forward or not tomorrow morning at nine AM. I think we're expecting chief, aren't we, that that's going to probably go forward? But there'll be an ice, ice measurement by the state inland fisheries and, and game department tomorrow. The derby is scheduled for, uh, February sixteenth and seventeenth. We've got four complimentary passes, and so if you like us on Facebook, once again, you can win a chance to win a, uh...
Sounds like that was your idea. Or was it Hanson's?
That was, uh, it was, it was, it was, it was not my idea to do anything to do with this. The derby folks came in, Ingo gave me the tickets, we had to figure out how to openly and transparently give away these four valuable tickets. And so Danielle decided a good way to do that would be to give them away by having somebody go on Facebook, like us, and then hold a raffle amongst all those people in the world who will go to our Facebook page and like us. And then we'll give away that valuable ticket, thirty-dollar value, and, uh, to the, to the lucky winner on a, on some sort of a scientific draw. We'll figure out the metrics for that somehow.
I need more friends, we only have twenty-six. Like, come on, the library has like a hundred, and they've only been in existence two months. Like, I've been doing this for a year and a half, please, people, like, like us on Facebook.
Don't do Facebook.
Fiscal warrants.
I'd like to make a motion to accept payroll expense summary dated February twelfth, two thousand thirteen for the amount of one hundred nineteen thousand five hundred and sixty dollars and fifty-three cents.
All in favor?
Also like to make... Also like to make a motion to accept treasurer's warrant dated February twelfth, two thousand thirteen for the amount of one hundred and forty-six thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous.